For which it says, "One nation under God, invisibility, liberty, and justice for all."
All right, good evening, everybody. Under Chairman's report, I have two follow-ups that I emailed out to the Board late last week, but since they were from last meeting, I will give them. The first is regarding the DEI policy. Per our Board Attorney, that just goes directly to the Policy Committee. There is no vote or anything that needs to be taken. So after it was presented, it has now moved on to the Policy Committee for consideration. The second was regarding the public participation in the letters last week. We contacted again our Board Attorney from Allen's concerns with that, and our attorney, Steve Steedor, said that the letters were fine. There was nothing maliciously false, harassing, or intimidating in them. So therefore, there was, those are perfectly fine that had been read as is at that last meeting. We will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Dave. Excuse me. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none?
Just want to add the...
Oh, yeah.
It's the, to...
Okay, that's, yeah, we'll have to do that afterwards. Hearing done, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We need to move, add an item under number 10, New Business. We need to add an item E, which is going to be a discussion and possible vote on the early retirement...
Offer of retirement.
Possible early retirement offer to our teachers. So I have a motion to add that to the agenda. Thank you, Jerry. Second, Shannon, any discussion on that?
That would be D.
That would be E. We already have a D, so it'll be E under New Business. It's going to be discussion and possible action on the teacher retire, early teacher retirement. All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. We will move back up to the agenda. And we are up to item five, which is our reports of our committees and liaisons. And it just looks like Suji, you're the only one tonight.
Good evening, Board of Education. Massey had a successful weekend for athletics. Football beat Stratford 58 to 14. Unfortunately, girls volleyball lost to St. Joseph's, but girls soccer won 4-0 over New Milford, as well as boys soccer. Way to go Panthers. The first Massey PTC meeting will be held in the library tomorrow at 7:00, and the Massey Pupil Services orientation will be held in the auditorium at 6:30 on Wednesday, September 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have committee reports for this evening? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public participation. I received a couple of letters that asked to be read. Two letters that were submitted did not come with addresses, so I can email those out, but those will not be read because I do not, those do not meet our required, our criteria for public participation, because I do not have addresses for those two. The first one comes from Alex Kitchner, 614 Moose Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut. "I'm writing to you as a former Monroe Public School student, social worker, and mother of four. Firstly, as an alumni of Monroe Public Schools, I support the transgender and nonconforming youth policy. I believe explicit protections need to be in place for these students. I competed in girls' sports at Massey and would have been happy to have any classmate on my team. I would not have felt afraid to share a bathroom. As a social worker, I've learned both through my master's program, as well as providing direct therapy to transgender youths, the dangers of bullying for these students. A study published from the University of Pittsburgh in 2020 found about 85% of transgender adolescents reported seriously considering suicide, while over half of transgender adolescents attempted suicide. Transgender nonconforming youths do not feel accepted in school or many parts of society. A policy like this shows Monroe Public School students, regardless of gender identity, that they are accepted at school as they are and that bullying them for their identity is not okay. Lastly, I speak to you as a mother. I have three daughters and a son, all of whom I would feel comfortable sharing a bathroom with transgender students. Girls are not being attacked in the bathroom by transgender students. I couldn't even find one example of this when I went to research it. As a parent, I have an obligation to teach my children tolerance and acceptance of differences so that as they grow, hopefully, we'll, we as a society can grow to be a safer place for all people. I will take this acceptance and tolerance over any disadvantages my daughters would have in competing in sports. I'd rather her classmates feel safe and affirmed than they have a higher ranking." The next letter is from Elizabeth Medaris, sorry, M-E-D-A-R-I-S. "To the Monroe Public School Board of Education and all parents of Monroe, every parent has a right and an obligation to protect their children from harm. We love our children and desire for them a safe community and environment to learn, connect, and grow. We must prepare them for the world. Surely, we can all agree on that. To those opposing trans accommodations, you are not actually protecting anyone here, not your kids, not my kids, not anyone's. The longer you shelter your kids from the reality, you're setting them up for failure and meanwhile allowing other people's kids to remain at risk. Here are some facts, since you seem to be concerned about you and your child being uncomfortable. Trans people are four times more likely to be the victim of violence than the rest of us. One LGBTQTIA youth between the ages of 13 and 24 attempts suicide every 45 seconds in the U.S. Most LGBTQTIA students say they do not feel safe in school. I have to ask, why are you so comfortable with that? There is a world out there, and it's not just changing, it has changed. I work for a global research company striving for diversity and inclusion in its people from race, religion, socioeconomic background, gender, and ability. We're invested a lot into not just accepting, but embracing differences and accommodating needs to ensure a culture that is safe and inclusive. Here's the thing, it's not just my employer, it's my, it's not my employer, it's most employers, not just liberal organizations, it's mainstream, not just progressive universities, most universities. This is not the future, this is the present. So if your child, especially at this age, is taught to discriminate against or even worse, fear the LGBTQTIA community like you do, they will be extremely disadvantaged ones. They will be ill-equipped to deal with reality, they will be disabled in their lives and careers. We must do everything possible to protect the nature, sorry, to protect and nurture the lives of all students, and that includes protecting transgender kids." Next one, Patricia German, 50 Bart Road. "My name is Patricia German, and I live at 50 Bart Road, Monroe. I'm a parent in this school, in this school district and a psychiatric nurse at a local hospital and have been for the, for the past 10 years. I'm writing to express my full support for a formal policy for our transgender and gender nonconforming youth. I'm in full agreement with Mr. Kapoor's policy recommendations. This policy not only falls in line with federal law Title IX, but also Executive Order 56 from February 23, 2017, by Daniel, by Governor Daniel P. Malloy and Commissioner Diana R. Wenzel that directs the State Department of Education in consultation with the Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities to develop guidance for Connecticut school districts on the rights, responsibilities, and best educational practices for transgender students. Moreover, Connecticut state laws law bans unfair discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. With that being said, I have heard the concerns of parents that have been added to this conversation regarding this matter, but the main theme here is keeping our children safe. This is not an exclusive concern and perhaps may be the driving force behind this policy. All parents want the same thing, no matter what side of the issue they fall on, which is a safe, accepting environment where their children can access the resources that they need to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally. As adults, we need to lead by example and find a way to implement policies and designate changes or adjustments that can help all our children learn acceptance, gain understanding of other differences, and become compassionate individuals within our community. The American Academy of Pediatric Study has found that more than half of transgender male teens, almost 30% of transgender female teens, and over 40% of non-binary youth have reported attempting suicide in their lifetime. Other research shows that LGBTQ teens are three times as likely to commit suicide as their cis heterosexual peers. According to the CDC, suicide is the leading cause of death for 15- to 24-year-olds Americans. As children grow and understand who they are, and especially the preteen teenage years can be challenging for any one of them. Understanding that you're part of a minority group that is discriminated against because of fear from lack of understanding, compassion, or other misinformation contributes to the aforementioned issue. Having a plan that allows them to be true selves with resources for them to use if they are bullied in a crisis and need support is allowing them to navigate these years equally with their peers. There have been specific safety concerns regarding bathroom and locker use, room use. Studies have shown that this is in fact, that it is in fact trans and non-binary youth that are at risk in areas where gender neutral, gender identity bathroom use has been banned. A study from Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health from 2019 has showed that trans persons or non-binary individuals that are forced to use the restroom or locker room that is designated by their gender at birth has led to 30%, 36% of this population reportedly, reporting being sexually assaulted within the 12 previous months. They are more likely to suffer verbal harassment and physical assault if forced to use these areas that do not align with their gender identity, which was outlined in a study conducted by UCLA's Williams Institute. Therefore, ironically, evidence shows that bathroom and locker room safety are valid, are a valid concern, not specifically to cis binary students, but for the safety of trans and non-binary students. Finding them a safe place to use moving forward would be beneficial for their well-being. The Human Rights Campaign has a foundation that recommends a welcoming schools program to prevent and combat these types of statistics. It provides guidance on how parents, educators, or even the community can impact bullying and violence that can lead to trans and non-gender, non-binary students to contemplate suicide. This is achieved through policies like Mr. Kapoor's that promote inclusive and diversity in the academic environment. Thank you for your time and consideration and concerning this information." All right. The next one is Carrie Villaverty, 32 Watch Hill Road. "I'm writing in support of adopting a policy for transgender and nonconforming youth. Mr. Kapoor's proposal, P. 514553, is a starting place for our community and ensures we align with the already established state law. A formal policy will remove ambiguity and the risk of non, oh, sorry, and the risk of inconsistent interpretations. Failure to allow students to use the restrooms, locker rooms, and athletic teams of their gender identity is already a violation of state law, but the needs of transgender students go beyond bathrooms and sports. All children deserve a safe and engaging space at school. When they leave our homes, that is what we hope for them, to be welcome, understood, and cared for, to be able to be themselves. We have shared values to teach our children, love and respect for others, to be welcoming and kind, and to be an active proponent of a safe learning environment. To the parents and families of nonconforming children, you are to be admired for your strength and demonstration of unconditional love in such a public way. As part of the Monroe School District community, I want to add my voice to help advocate for your children. To Mr. Kapoor and others who have publicly supported this policy, I thank you for continuing to work towards the best for Monroe. There are a lot of families that support and appreciate your efforts. My family is standing with you as one of them. And to our teachers and administrators, thank you for your caring, your care towards our children's wellness that you've always shown them. We all want what is best for our children. We are neighbors and friends, we have more in common than not, than not. I suspect most kids care more about which friends are in their classes and not the gender identity of those classmates. As a previous commentator said, let the kids, let the kids be kids. That's exactly what we are trying to do." All right. We have two, two more. I'll leave the shorter one first. Kate Briggs, 11 Cannon Way, Monroe. "Hello, unfortunately, I'm unable to attend the Board of Education meeting today, but I would like to submit the following comment for the record. I would like to comment in support of adopting a transgender, nonconforming youth policy for Monroe School District. Transgender youth need our understanding and support, not our disdain and fear, and this can start by formally adopting a policy that acknowledges, respects, and includes transgender students in our school. Many thanks." And final letter, Erin Tammany, does not give her number, but Boulder Ridge Road. And I'm assuming that's Monroe. Okay. "I'd like to start by saying that I was heartbroken, disgusted by the comments made at the last meeting against the policy for transgender and gender nonconforming kids in our school and towards Mr. Kapoor. Transgender children are our children. They are not second-class citizens whom we should fear and call dangerous. What is dangerous is hatred, ignorance, and bigotry. I don't understand why some citizens of this town feel so threatened by transgender and non-binary children. I do not believe this is about concern for the safety and well-being of the cisgender children. This is in response to these children challenging culturally constructed norms of gender, which makes people uncomfortable. Instead of admitting that they are uncomfortable or ignorant about transgender and non-binary children, these individuals are choosing to marginalize and stigmatize them. What this is effectively doing is making those who are actually more susceptible to bullying and violence, the transgender children, seem like the predators or the deviants. The comments bade by dissenters at the last meeting struck me horribly misinformed and abusive to those children who struggle with gender identity or who have chosen to forego cultural norms associated with gender. I'm heartbroken for our transgender children and their parents who endured the verbal abuse and discrimination from concerned citizens at the last meeting. I want to ensure them that they are, that there are people in this town who love and support them and their children, that they are, that there are people like me who are willing to listen, empathize, understand, and create solutions so they can feel safe and comfortable in their school. It seems that every time a parent or lawmaker opposes a transgender child using the bathroom that they are most comfortable using, these parents and lawmakers cite the safety of women and girls as the issue. Similarly, similarly, when it comes to athletics, the discussion of fairness and equality in women's sports is the argument. I'm curious what all these people have done over the years to support equality in women's athletics. I'm curious why now all of us, why all of a sudden now they're concerned about women in sports? And why is there no talk about fairness in men's sports? My guess is, and I apologize if I'm wrong, is that they are all of a sudden care about these issues not because they are advocates for equality, but because they have chosen to judge or condemn rather than to understand the experience of a transgender child. It's hard to talk to our children and explain something we don't fully understand. I struggle to explain situations like this to my 10-year-old son so he can be tolerant and inclusive to those who differ from him. The solution here is not to ignore it or pretend it doesn't exist. It is rather to have an open and honest dialogue to normalize the fact that transgender people are human beings who, despite their biology, are choosing to live their lives in the most authentic way possible for them. They are not trying to corrupt or assault other children under the guise of being transgender. That's, that notion is absolutely absurd. This is not about biology, it's about culture. This is what, about wanting to label someone as one thing or another, black or white, man or woman, about needing to know who or what someone is so we can feel comfortable and confident. The truth is that almost nothing or no one in this world is binary. I've spoken theoretically, but I would also like to point out practically, non-gendered bathrooms are prevalent in so many places and have been for years. Airplanes, coffee shops, stadiums, and retailers have them. And the very least, having one gender-neutral bathroom on each floor of a building in our schools doesn't seem like an impossible feat. Why wouldn't we want children who are navigating the difficulties of adolescence and where they fall along the spectrum of gender identity have a place that feels safe when they need to meet a basic human need? Our mission is to educate children regardless of gender, ability, race, or creed. Let's make good on that promise and, in addition, teach our children empathy and understanding for everyone in our community. I applaud these students for being brave enough to challenge the existing norms, to be true, to, to be their true selves, and I applaud their parents, like Janet Persico, who's, who love and support their children and who are fighting for their well-being. Please know that you have allies in this town who are willing to stand behind you and your children as you walk through these challenges." All right. And that's everything.
I'd like to make a comment, please.
Yes.
So a couple of things. Number one, public participation is limited to three minutes. And the statements that are read should be limited to three minutes. Okay? So if it can't be read in three minutes, shouldn't be read, or the person submitting the statement should keep it under three minutes. That's number one. Number two is, any public official on this board that's elected by the people of the town is open to criticism, completely. I agree with a couple of those letters, the intent of them, to affirm the opinions of people in town. I think that that was, that was great, that was noble, right? But I disagree with a couple of them that openly attacked or called into question the people in town's opinions of the opposing viewpoint. No member of the public should be attacked in this meeting or called, or their opinions called into question in public participation. So I disagree with reading aloud any letters going forward that attack other townspeople or call them out specifically. The generalization, the questioning, the assumptions should not be made. You advocate for your viewpoint, and you provide evidence of that viewpoint, and you're standing on it. And that's it. That's what public participation is for.
But that wasn't on my speech. The letters were just as long.
Public participation last week did not attack the public. It attacked a member of the Board who's an elected member of the Board. It didn't call into question or make assumptions about or attack members of the public. I wouldn't stand for that as Chairman of the Policy Committee, for that to occur, and I, I'm not going to stand for it now in public participation. So that, that practice needs to be amended going forward.
Agree, agree 100%.
If it was, it was, if the viewpoint was completely the opposite, I would make the same statement. It's not right.
I asked Judge Joe to check with Steve Steedor on that.
What's the question specifically that we want to...
Yeah. Can you attack members of the public? And I'll go back, Steve Steedor already ruled, which I read earlier, I don't know if you were here for the Chairman's report, that he ruled that what was said specifically about Nick was, was not improper.
As you would expect, because you're an elected member and you're open to criticism by the public that elected you.
Shannon.
I think it's very presumptuous for somebody to say that, that we are not supporting the, all of the students. The people here have been, including myself, volunteered countless hours in these meetings because we passionately care about the transgender students and all of the students. We show up for the meetings, and we give a lot of time away from our families because we care about all of the students. And it's very presumptuous and disrespectful to say otherwise. Joe, are the transgender students protected under our current policies?
Under current policies and state statute to protect them, yes.
They are protected.
Yes.
So this really isn't about that they aren't protected. It's simply causing more divisiveness, is what it is. It's simply causing more divisiveness. And it's, it's, it's so sad for our children, all of our children, that that's become the norm in society right now. It's cost the town of Monroe. How many times has Donna referenced even tonight? We need more legal opinions. How much, how much money has it already cost us in, in attorney fees? How much divisiveness in our town? It used to be, for a very long time, at these board meetings, that you would not, it wasn't political. Everybody was here giving up their time for all of the kids in our district because we care. It wasn't political. You couldn't, you would walk in, you wouldn't know who had a D or an R next to their name. We worked together. It's a shame that that has changed dramatically. And the divisiveness that our kids are growing up with viewing and causing anxiety has been brought through the Monroe Board of Education. It makes me sad.
Thank you. Nick.
So a couple of things. First of all, I think that if members of the public are going to come and give comment on any issue, really, not just this one, that if you're going to stand up here and give your name or, give your name and address with regards to George's comments about letters being read, I actually agree with that. I think that if things are going to be read, that our three minutes should probably stand because that, it seems that you're able to speak for triple, quadruple the amount of time if you submit something. But if someone submits a comment, that, that viewpoint should be able to be challenged by other members of the public. As taxpayers, as residents of the town, I think that we all have the opportunity to go to meetings and speak what we want to speak about. I think that's important in public debate. We do it every budget season, we do it around other issues in the town. With regards to divisiveness, first of all, I think that the conversation around this policy is sorely needed. As I said in my report, we have hard data, not from the state, not from the national level, from here at Massey, from here in Monroe, from two years ago, that a large proportion, not a majority, a minority proportion of our students saw harassment based on sexual orientation or gender identity. And that needs to be addressed. That is part of our job as members of the Board of Education. This has nothing to do with Democrat versus Republican. This has to do with policies that we should be instituting that should be protecting all of our children. This is, as I said again in my report, this is, this was, and you can read different articles about this, routine in many, many other districts. And so when we talk about creating controversy in the town, if a policy is a good policy and it causes controversy and people don't want it, then they have every right to come up and say that. But at the end of the day, it is up to us to make a decision about that.
Shannon. And then we've got to rein it in, because we have got an odd topic.
One more thing, one more thing, and then you're going to call me.
The policy exists to protect them. This is perhaps, you know what? The policy already exists to protect all the students, including the transgender students, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think, I think I'd like to leave it on that.
I think that...
Quickly, because then we need to rein this back in.
Not on the merits of the discussion of the policy, right? Purely on the ability to come and advocate for or against a position. Completely agree with Nick's statement on that. That's not what's, what's at issue here. What, the issue that I raised is that the advocacy for or against is, is directed in a way where it's attacking... a way where it's attacking the other position, not in advocacy for or against the position. And that is the, the issue that I have with that.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to point out that in terms of divisiveness, I think that letter that was read into the record last week was so appalling that Channel 12 News actually picked up the story. And that person, you know, I understand what you're saying, Nick's a public official, attack him, that's fine, but they also attacked our children as well. And I wish there was that much outrage when that person's letter was read attacking, you know, some of the children in our school.
I don't, okay. Agreed. If it did attack children?
It did.
Okay. I, I don't know the specific point you're referencing within the letter, right? But if it, if, if it's going after a publicly elected official, it's fair game.
Yeah, I'm talking about...
If you're going after members of the public, it's not.
And it's presumptuous to think that anybody here does not support transgender or anybody. It's very presumptuous to, to say that. And it is, it is absolutely causing divisiveness. It is absolutely causing divisiveness. When one of the letters tonight said, "We have more in common than apart," I agree with that. Monroe is a beautiful town. We have more in common than apart, as Jane.
Like I said, I just wish there was more outrage last week when that letter was written. That was disgusting.
Mm-hmm.
So disgusting. I had people calling my house saying, "What the heck is going on in this town that people would even read a letter like that?"
Right. Did it used to be this way? I agree with you, Alan.
But again, Alan, I'll go back to our, our...
Yeah, I know what the attorney said. I'm just saying...
There was nothing maliciously false, intimidating, or harassing in the letter.
Doesn't make it right, just because if, I mean, if the only...
Based on what? A letter that's written to an editor in a newspaper could say the exact same thing.
Or they could sit here and say the same thing, correct?
Intimidating or harassing. I can write a letter to the editor and call out any elected official, whether it's on the local, state, or federal letter, because you put yourself out there. It's not like they said anything that was.
That, I agree with you. Legally, it was fine, but in terms of like being a human being, I don't think it was fine.
That's not what this is about, though.
Right.
It's public participation. And you can't pick and choose what letters you read. If it's submitted for public participation, they could come sit here and say the same exact thing.
Right. As long as they're not saying, there is no rule that you cannot say anything about a public official.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with the public official thing. I'm, I'm just, the whole general tone of that letter.
Then that's the, that's the person's letter. That person could have sat here and said the same thing and would have had the ability to, to say their, to say their participation the same way. You, you can't be, you can't be annoyed or upset because you don't like the tone of the letter. The person has a, a fair right to say that, as long as it's not maliciously false, as long as it's not intimidating, it's not harassing, which none of that was.
Thanks, Donna. I know as a matter of tradition, we have read letters that have been submitted to us. My question is, why are we reading every single letter? I think we need to look at this because if we get inundated with 20, 30, 40 letters, how long is this going to take us every single night? I think we should...
People who are taking time away from their family and volunteering their time for all the students in Monroe to actually be here.
I think what we need to do is we, all the letters that we receive, we scan in, we send out to all of us in our packet. The chair, you can acknowledge, I got a letter from this one, this one, this one, and they will be attached to the minutes. And those letters that have names and addresses, we attach them to the minutes. They're sent out to all of us so that we can see what the public is sending us equally and fairly. But I think we need to change our policy or protocol of how we handle letters because when we get hot topics like this, it's going to generate stuff and we're spending an absorbent amount of time at, at the meetings doing this.
So, letters submitted are not state policy that have to be read?
Our, our...
It's our policy.
Our public participation says written statements are always welcome and copies will be provided to Board of Education members.
Doesn't say they have to be read.
I don't believe it has to be read, right?
Okay. So if they don't have to be read, then they should be submitted.
No, we, we send them out, attach them to the minutes.
Right.
We let anyone that comes up here want to speak. We all see the letters and we do that fairly inconsistancy, consistently with all the letters that we receive.
The board would, the board would need to be in agreement with that.
Well, we'll, I'll, I'll take the step of legging out what the policy says.
Okay. So we'll have to put that on hold until George researches that.
We have a policy meeting October 4th.
Okay.
My question is, what are we going to do if we get 20, 30, 40 letters? Are we going to sit here for two hours while we read all of them? That's, I'm just, it's, it's not the topic, it's the protocol of it.
Again, it's the tone. It's, it's, well, not brand new, but it's...
Regardless of the tone, regardless of the issue, we just be fair and consistent?
Well, so we will, we'll take a review of it prior to the next meeting. We'll put an output to the BOE on what the, what the read is on it, and we can take it from there.
Perfect.
Everybody is good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we will move on because there's still public participation. And I think Jen Aguilar is the first one who, on our sign.
Yep. I have to follow that. I better put my timer on, too. All right.
Joe can put his timer on.
Jennifer Aguilar, 32, Surrey Lane. I actually had something written out, but I think I will not read that because Ms. Tamery pretty much said a lot of what I was going to say, but I would, number one, I would like to start by saying, "You guys are all volunteers." And I don't know if the general public knows that. You do not get paid. You are elected officials, but you're volunteers. Like Shannon said, you are here, you give your time to our kids, and I wish I had heard the outrage that you have tonight, last week, on how a fellow volunteer was spoken to. Maybe nothing was said illegally, but to call a policy disgusting when it is addressing children in this school is pretty much calling those children and their beliefs disgusting. It may not be legal, but it was disturbing to hear. What was it? Disgusting? And there were two words. And I disagree with you, Mr. King. I think when somebody comes up to this microphone and calls a member disgusting, calls him dangerous, calls apology disgusting, I think that public member is also open for criticism because he's talking about children. He talked about children. He talked about the way that Mr. Kapoor wants a group of children to be seen and included. And that's what was called disgusting. And Mr. Kapoor was called dangerous. That kind of rhetoric, that kind of rhetoric is what's dangerous. That was really all I had to say. I, 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 I feel bad saying that now that you're saying, "I agree with you about, about attacking the public." Nobody wants to attack the public. The rhetoric in, in, on so many issues, like you said, Shannon, is so divisive right now. Nobody wants to be divisive. I think people just want to go with the times and things are changing. And I think Nick's policy is moving with that change. I actually talked to my kids about this issue because, I don't know, I don't have a transgender child, so I can't say anything to this policy. I don't have LGBTQ, oh, I can't even get all the words straight. I don't have that in my immediate family. In my extended family, yes. So I want people fighting for this, for these issues because I want all the children to be included. And I lost my train of thought. That's pretty much all I had to say. But I also wanted the general public to know that you guys are all volunteers and to come up here and to, to disparage volunteers for all you do. Thank you very much.
Bob Boshka's next.
I will be brief because there's been so much discussion already, but I just wanted to...
Name and address, sorry.
Oh, sorry, sorry about that. Robert Boshka, 71 Ridgedale Road in Monroe. And I just wanted to ask, I was going to ask the parameters. So thank you so much, David, because I do want to know the parameters for the public participation. So that would be very helpful. So it sounds like you need to have a policy decision and kind of come out with all that because I do think that the public, I, I really agree with Mr. Kapoor, that, I think you've said it in various meetings and other ways, that the more public participation we can get, maybe I'm putting my words in your mouth, so I'm just going to say this, that the more public participation we can get, I think the stronger we all are as a community. And so I would value more public participation. However, in light of the meetings here, I'm not quite sure we're going to get what we really need in this particular climate in three minutes. So I really would like to explore how we can have town halls or some other avenues where the residents get together and, and talk about this and try to have a bit of a meetings of the mind so that we can come together as a community and understand each other so that we can then come together to then help the policy people make policies. As opposed to giving you an ordinate amount of information for you to sift through to come up with a policy, it would be better if the town discusses it amongst the town members. Of course, you're certainly part of the town. And then we can all make an informed decision and you can make an informed policy. So I, I would, would like to encourage more public participation in some capacity, respecting the fact that there's a limited amount of time within these meetings. But I would like the town to be informed. This is the lion's share of our budget in town, the Board of Education budget, and I think we all, it behooves us all to make wise decisions with all the facts. And as many opinions as we can have so that we are representing all the community. So I, I just really wanted to know the parameters, and it sounds like we really don't have the parameters. It sounded like you needed to state your name, your address, and it can't be malicious, intimidating, or harassing. Are those the only, and, and now three minutes?
The, the parameters are right on the agenda under public participation.
Okay. And that, that's all there is?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we'll go with that. But I do think that the three minutes is helpful, but I think it might be helpful if we can figure out another way to have more discussion, and I'm not sure what the avenue is for that. So I'm not sure.
Thank you.
That, that can be accomplished. Thank you.
Thanks. And you hit three minutes. That was everybody on our... Okay, that was everybody who signed up ahead of time. I will allow anybody here who wishes to speak. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. My name is Morgan Robison. I'm a resident of 201 Wheeler Road. I'm actually an alumni here, class of 2011. As an individual going through these schools, I was, everybody who knew me, everybody who saw me in the hall saw me as a bright, happy, young individual, always smiling with my red hat and everything. But I don't identify as a woman. I'm gender non-conforming, like a lot of students are, I'm sure, these days. And from my perspective, I can't say that I looked at the policy, this was our very last moment for me. But a policy expansion, I'm in favor of Mr. Kapoor's policy and the expansion of it overall, and having those resources to have been able to properly discover myself during such formative years of my development would have been so incredibly helpful for me. I can't say that I personally have attempted to commit a suicide, but those thoughts are there. I've lost friends who had policies in schools that were very much against supporting people for who they are. And having a, a policy and expanding upon it, it's needed, especially in this day and age. Times are changing, times have changed, and if you look around you, while we are the ones here kind of forming these policies, the students now are the ones who are really going to be changing the future and changing things for the better, and we need to lead by example and support them to really flourish. Say you put, taking plants, for example, you put a plant in a condition that it is not going to thrive in, that plant is going to be lost. Our students, they're very much like plants. We need to make sure that they have the proper nutrition, the proper potting soil essentially, and making sure that their conditions are right for them to grow up happy, healthy, and being who they are. Not being able to be who you are can be so incredibly stifling that you just close into yourself. And so I support the policy and just further expanding upon it because it, it's needed. There are so many of us out there that just never spoke up. I have so many friends that never said anything until they were well out of high school because they either didn't have the resources to be able to properly study this and be supported by people around them, or they were just too scared because they didn't feel safe going to the bathroom by themselves. I've read so many stories of transgender individuals having to go to the hospital because they just, there's no bathroom for them to use. And as somebody who also, again, who went through the school system, back when I was in school, in the locker rooms, we all changed in the stalls or in the changing rooms themselves. We never changed in front of anybody. At this age, we're just like, "Ugh, I don't want to see you, and I don't want you to see me." We all always waited our turns to either use the bathroom stalls or go behind the curtain. And I can't imagine that has changed much, truthfully, if my memories from high school and middle school and everything are still the same, which I'm pretty sure they are. Everybody goes and does their own thing in seclusion. I remember seeing students changing within the actual lockers themselves because we just didn't want to be seen changing. It's like, okay, we're changing for gym. And when it comes to the bathroom, we just want to go to the bathroom. We just want someplace where we can go in, go to the bathroom, and hurry to class because there's a limited time in between class. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Janice Persico, 31 Audio Drive. I spoke last week and I wasn't going to speak again, but I just wanted to add a little bit more. I, I know that we have all talked about how Connecticut state law that kids already have protections, but the reason we need this policy in addition to things that are already happening in the school because it's Connecticut law. We need this policy because I needed this policy a year ago. When my transgender son came out, I had no idea what the Connecticut state law was. I had no idea what to do. Masick was 100% supportive and loving and amazing, but no one could give me direction. I did not know where to even look or where to begin. So this policy, if someone could have said, you know, "This is where you need to look. This is what is happening in our schools," it would have made, it would have given me so much more of a feeling of support and love and just the knowledge of what to do. And that is why we need this policy, irregardless if they're already protected under the law and we're already doing a lot of these things in the school. We need to have this policy. It's a unique subset of students that have unique needs and they need this direction and support in our school system. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for all of the work you do. You guys are amazing and I don't think you get enough credit for that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right. We will move on to our report of our superintendent. I'm going to say, Ron, you're first up.
Yeah, Ron, to lead us with the finance update.
So I'll, I guess I'll try to expedite this a little bit. The first bullet under finance update is the, it's actually just one budget transfer. Everyone should have received a hard copy. Joe, I don't know if you want to, can you pull up the agenda, too?
Sure. You have the budget transfer?
Yeah. So the, I'll just walk through it quick. A couple of years ago, we, with the auditor's blessing, we're just doing it on a, we're doing the transfer on a, by major object code. So it's basically a Series 5000. We're transferring $214,000 out of other services, and it's actually coming out of the account transportation for sped, and that's going to cover deficits in major object code 754, $754,000, and $757,000. And those are going into emergency building repairs and equipment instructional. And the deficits in those two major object codes were created by elevator repairs and turf field repairs that we covered at year-end, and also the purchase of the computers that we were able to cover through the operating budget. Number two, you'll be asked to vote on that later. Number two, you'll be asked to vote on that later under New Business.
And just so everybody's clear, this is last, this is-
That's fiscal year '21.
'21 and ended on June 30th. So, this is just a transfer so that we don't have, because we have to have all the accounts, no deficits.
Correct. So, the next document, which you received with the same handout, which goes through, you know, goes through the, gives you the line by line how last fiscal year ended up. It's got the proposed transfers in there on pages nine, 10, and 15, and those are highlighted. So, we'll start on page nine. After the transfer to the building repair, you see at the bottom, halfway down that page, that Major Object Code is zeroed out. Page 10, you can see the transfer coming out of Special Ed Transportation. And on page 15, it's covering, you know, the balance of the transfer is going to instructional equipment to cover the computers. Page 16 of this document shows the overall surplus for the year at $2,013,529.
Ron, can you just remind me again of, in state law, how much are we allowed to put in like a 10-248 dash account? Is it 2%?
I believe it's 2% of the budget.
Of the total budget?
Yeah.
And that would be just... So, like 1.17, we could request of that to be placed in the 10-248?
Pursuant to 10-248A.
Right. So, $1,170.
Do we have to vote on that?
Well, I think that's further on our meeting.
Agenda?
Agenda. When we talk about-
That's in D under New Business, yeah.
Yeah. Which is item D under New Business. I just wanted those parameters.
Okay, so, three in the Finance Update is the Fund Activity Statement for August, which I did not give you as a handout. It is attached. It's linked to the document online. And Joe, I don't know if you want to pull it up. I mean, we're, what, four weeks into the school year at this point? Three months into the fiscal year? There's not a lot to talk about at this point for the current fiscal year outside of what was already addressed in SED last week.
Yeah, Ron, can I, I-
Sure.
-to jump back. I just had two questions on the-
Fiscal year '21?
Yeah.
Oh, sure, sure.
I'm sorry about that. On page six, maybe 10, 10 or so lines down the page, we have the Director of Facilities line. I know we had a retirement last year, I believe, in that line, the Director, the CO, Director of Facilities line. So, it's showing, there was nothing budgeted there. There was no appropriation, there was no revised budget, but we have-
What, oh, I see. You're about a quarter of the way down?
Yeah, page six, about a quarter of the way down.
Oh, page six, sorry.
We have $54,000 expended in that, but we didn't budget for that person. And I know that last fiscal year, we had movement in that area in Central Office. So, is that somewhere else?
Yeah, so... I think what it was, was the prior direct, it wasn't, actually, it was a change in title, right?
Yes. And he was pulled outside, maybe because he was pulled outside of the bargaining unit.
And he was also in the, yeah, so he was in the, the prior director was actually in the facility bargaining unit.
So, was the change in title, and so in this year's budget, we're budgeting in the correct, where they're supposed to be?
Yes.
Okay. And then the second question I just had-
I would think they just looked down on the-
Well, it's, you know what? It may have been budgeted the old way, we'll have to move money.
Okay.
If you don't-
Got, understood.
It was budgeted, it just-
It's in the right-
Yeah, so it was being picked up from, I want to say, January on as a director. And when the budget was created, it was probably created before, you know-
Understood. And the second question I had was on page eight of the document about a little bit more than three quarters of the way down, the Contracted Services System Wide line item in that last block there, about halfway through that last block. There was nothing budgeted, but that was $107,669 spent. I know that there's other lines in here that have to do with COVID, obviously. Is that COVID-related or is that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, or is it, it's halfway through the bottom block? It's like right in the middle?
Yeah, it's 107, 669. Contracted Services System Wide.
Right.
It's the only blank that would be in the-
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong-
Original appropriation.
I didn't even put you on the spot. I just-
Yeah, no, no, that's-
The ones that stuck out to me when I was just, I have to do this briefly, was just the ones that were blanks in the original appropriation and in the revised budget, but had money, like substantial dollars, that came out of it in the thousands. I know there were a couple here that are 600, 500 that could be transferred from other things. But this one just in particular was, it didn't seem like it was budgeted, but there was over $100,000 taken out of it.
Yeah. I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Yeah, it's no problem.
Ron, where do we dump the money for contract negotiations? Because we don't put, we don't spread that, we just dump it in-
You're talking legal?
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's in-
Okay, so that wouldn't be it?
No, no.
So, maybe that is the PPP stuff, like the, for COVID-related?
Yeah, no, anything COVID-related, we were, we were spiking out in the, we had two COVID lines, either in supplies or personnel.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Yeah, it's no problem at all. I just, I just saw it for the first time tonight, so I'm just reacting live to it.
Anything else, or?
No, no, I'm all set, thank you. Apologies.
Did anybody have questions on the year-to-date through August? All right. Can you keep going on?
Yeah, so, actually, the-
Just the ESER?
The ESER II and ARPESER grants.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll walk through that. We have a spreadsheet here for you. And I just thought this would be, you know, I wanted you to have this information because I think it's going to be important and be, you know, impact the conversation that we have a little bit later on when we, you know, look at the budget surplus. So, you know, as this, as the past year went on, we've got a number of, a number of grants. If you remember correctly, the first grant, which is not reflected here, is the, was the CARES in the Coronavirus Relief Fund. That grant was used initially to buy a lot of the PPP, a lot of hand sanitizer, masks, and whatnot. But the next two grants that came after were the ESER II and was originally called the ESER III, but is now being called the ARPESER Grant. And I just wanted to walk you through kind of where we are right now based on, you know, a number of things that have happened since, you know, since we, you know, we created the budget last year and where a lot of that money has gone. And just take a good, hard, strategic look at this because, you know, we talk about, and I know Donna brought it up last time, you know, trying to avoid the cliff. And we're building a cliff with that. But quite frankly, I was, I'm in a position right now where, you know, we need staff. We needed, we needed to, you know, you know what's happened. We've talked about it at the elementary levels. I know Darlene talked about it at the last meeting with the number of students coming in requiring services. So, you know, if nothing else, we needed to, I need to assure that, you know, we can afford some of this staff. I don't necessarily think this is the best way through the grant because the grant is used, there's a lot of good programming that we'd like to do. But I need to be fiscally responsible first and make sure that we pay our bills. So, you know, for now, and we can revise these grants, I just wanted to share where that money has been spent. So, if you look at, you know, the ESER II dollars up top, you'll see ESER II is for '21, '22, and '22, '23 for a total of $512,000. And you see, and we'll go down and look at the detail in a second. But you see, we've got $323,000 and change allocated for this current year and another $188,700 for the next year. The ARPESER is $1.1 million. And you see how we have that broken up as it stands right now to ensure that we cover the, a lot of it is staffing. You know, I wanted to make sure we could do that first. $603,000 this year and another $500,000 next year. Sheila, correct me if I'm wrong, but ESER II expires after '23. ESER III expires in, I believe, September of '24. And we're trying to get clarification on can we encumber the money in the beginning of the year and will that suffice? And I believe the answer was yes, but we're double checking that. So, you know, that bottom ARPESER money, where you see it for '21, '22, and '22, '23, we could actually shift that over a year. Again, I think this is all very important as we look at the, you know, the surplus a little bit later on. But if you see where we've spent the money, a lot of it has been in staff. You know, we brought the coordinator back. So, if we were to use the ESER II money for the next two years, like we have it in here right now, and again, this, this grant can be revised. If we, you know, we roughly can pay, and again, the coordinator, it's a little misleading there because it shows 61, 325, and 62, 797. That's because we replaced the coordinator with a newer, a newer teacher at the elementary school level, at the kindergarten level. But we'd be, you know, we'd be basically, you know, allocating $123,000 over the next two years of that ESER II money for that. You see the other positions, a social worker, the psychologist, you know, the high intervention math, the high-impact math supports. You know, those are all people. So, if you go from, you know, the ELL, the .25 FTE and the ELL teacher without increasing the ELL numbers, all the way down through the high-impact math support, those are all people. The other things was, were programs that we did over the, over the summer, middle school, summer school program for not just Special Ed, but for regular ed, SRBI training at the middle school and high school level. And I want to thank Sheila because she helped put this together. The next thing was the Masic Summer Program. You'll notice that's italicized and in slightly grayed out. That program did not run this summer. So, technically, there's, you know, another $10,000 in there. You see the stuff below that is, is not necessarily people, but also good programs. We brought back the Teachers College Professional Development, something that our elementary teachers, you know, rely on heavily for literacy instruction at the elementary and so on there. So, I just wanted to kind of break down how we have this money allocated now. That's ESER II. When you go down and you look at ARPESER, you see really quickly that we're spending $1 million very quickly on staff. You know, the, we had to add two kindergarten teachers, technically, two third-grade teachers. One turned out to be a fourth-grade teacher because of some internal movement. I know at the last meeting, we talked about a special education teacher that we're going to have to, we're going to have to add. So, again, if you look at that, if you look at all of that, you know, we are, we are creating exactly the cliff that, you know, we want to kind of avoid. Is there a possibility to, you know, possibly use some of the surplus this year to pay for some of this stuff? Spread some of that out so we can fund 50% of these positions next year and perhaps, you know, 25% the next year or so. Then when it's time to bring them in, it's not, you know, we're not adding, you know, six positions all at once and creating this huge, huge number. So, I just wanted people to be aware. This is where we've, where we've kind of allocated the money initially. You know, you'll see, there's an after-school tutoring evening program for $65,000. You know, that's actually across, we want to do that at all levels. That's right now just a placeholder. That's really where we really, if we really wanted to get some good intervention coming out of the, coming out of the pandemic to help accelerate our kids, you know, that's where we'd like to, you know, really see a good, strong, robust tutoring program for our kids, whether it be in-person or even virtual. But where we target select kids and get them, you know, get them where they need to be to access grade level and course-specific, you know, curriculum. So, again, I think it's important that you have this. You know, I'm in this awkward spot right now. We keep talking about it. I just want to make sure that we can cover our costs this year. And if the worst-case scenario, I'd like to plan for the worst and, you know, hope for the best. If the worst-case scenario happened, you know, we'd have to use a lot of this money to pay for that stuff this year. But I think, again, this is, you know, all part of a bigger conversation later on with the surplus. Al?
Can you tell us about the behavior tech?
Shannon, do you want to talk about the behavior tech a little bit?
Yes, we put a behavior tech in every single building. We hadn't had them in the past. We only have one in Hawaii. We're putting one in every building.
Board-certified behavior analysts?
We have a board-certified behavior analyst for the whole district. These behavior techs were funded in that, BCD.
Okay.
One in district and the BT's one in the-
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Shannon.
Anybody have questions for Jill on this at this time?
And we can come back to it, I think, later on. I just wanted to keep the board apprised of Executive Order 13G, the governor's executive order that, amongst other individuals, indicates that everyone working in pre-K to 12 public schools needs to be fully vaccinated by September 27th. It's next Monday. Or they have to submit to weekly testing. This includes, obviously, all of our staff, but it also includes all of our vendors. So, Sedexo, All-Star, Constellations, which does some of our OT and PT work, pretty much anyone that works with our students. It's going to be a huge lift for the district to track this. And we just received guidance on the implementation of this over the weekend with a state call this afternoon that Jack actually sat on. And it's going to be the main topic of conversation for tomorrow's state call with the superintendents in Department of Public Health. There are some nuances to the vaccination mandate. And I just, again, I just wanted to keep everyone up to date on it. So, you know, it sounds really simple. Everybody needs to be fully vaccinated by September 27th or they can no longer be employed by the Monroe Public Schools. Again, there's some nuances there. If you've had your first dose before September 27th and are scheduled for the second dose, you're okay. Employees can apply for medical or religious exemptions before September 27th, but they would need to, they would need to participate in weekly testing. So, if you had a medical exemption, go ahead, Alan, you have a question?
No.
Okay. So, if you have a medical or religious exemption, they would still need to participate in weekly testing. Before September 27th, any employee doesn't necessarily need to apply for a medical or religious exemption. But again, they would just need to participate in weekly testing. So, before, before September 27th, you could have a medical exemption, a religious exemption, or just say you're not going to do it. After the 27th, you need either a medical or a religious exemption to, you know, to not be mandated to get the vaccine. Again, you would still need to be tested weekly. Non-vaccinated employees who have an exemption or who plan to test and have had COVID in the last 90 days would not need to participate in the weekly testing until that 90-day period expires. And then anyone who participates in the testing, they can either do the PCR test or the antigen test, but they can't do a, they can't do a home test. And we're required to track all of this. Nick?
Two questions. The application for medical or religious exemption is made to you. You approve those?
We just got, we just got guidance from the state on those with pretty specific criteria. We're just going through, this is part of the webinar that Jack was on today. But yeah, they would come to us.
And if someone does have an exemption that is approved, does the district pay for the weekly testing?
No. As of right now, the stance across the state is that, that the districts are not responsible for paying for it. But the, the state also sent out a list of, I think, 14 sites around the state that where you can get tested for free.
Thank you.
Josh?
A couple of questions.
Sure.
You said all subcontractors are required? Or is that anybody who walks through the building essentially?
The, it's anyone who's working with kids. So, the only one it would really kind of- So the only one it would really kind of negate would be if you have a plumber coming in to, you know, work on the water system or, you know, a treatment of some type or something like that. If they're not, if they're not working with kids.
And then is the state giving you guidance on how to track this or leaving this entirely up to us?
Here's your answer. He's laughing.
I mean, it's, I mean, we've got a.
I mean, that's a major task. I mean, it's, I didn't mean.
It's huge, it's huge. And I know a lot of it's falling on Jack right now. I mean, we, we have, you know, four hundred and ninety, Jack sent emails out to everybody. We've got four hundred and ninety-six respondents back. Ninety-two percent of them said they were vaccinated, which was great. We had them upload their vaccination card. Then today, the state said, okay, they have to send you their vaccination card, but they also have to fill out an attestation that says that this isn't a fake vaccination card. That would have been great for Jack to have gotten that to people the first time. Because now he's got all the cards and now we've got to go back out and get all this stuff. And now we're going to have to do V lookup magic on, on Excel and, you know, match people back up and make sure that they're doing their attestations. But if they're vaccinated, if they're not vaccinated, when they tested, if they're, if they had COVID, when did they have COVID? So when does that expire? We've got to, we've got to maintain all of that. They gave us criteria that we need to maintain, but it's going to be a whopper of a spreadsheet to keep everything.
But you said ninety-two percent of our staff are fully vaccinated?
Ninety-two percent of the, of the four hundred and ninety-six who responded are vaccinated. The ones where quite, you know, quite frankly, the ones that we're having a hard time hearing back from are like our stipended workers, so someone who might not be checking their emails. They don't necessarily have a Monroe P S email.
Oh, like our coaches and stuff.
Coaches and stuff like that. And then our.
My coaching room may not begin until.
Yeah, the winter.
Right. So I'm not even thinking about my activity with the Monroe.
Yeah. And substitutes, which is going to be really tricky. You know, it seems pretty easy, but like we have a whole bank of substitutes. But, you know, I'll just say, you know, we have a good number of substitutes that never report for a job. They've put themselves on the list and they sub at Trumble and they're on our list. So we're trying to, trying to contact them or are they working for us? I mean, the folks that come in all the time, we know and it's easier to get ahold of them. But some of these other folks, it's, so that's where the rubs are going to be. Our, in terms of our, you know, our, what I'd call our everyday staff, we're in pretty good shape, but it's those other oddballs.
What about parent volunteers?
So that's what I was going to say next. You know, this is intended for anyone working, anyone working with kids. So, you know, if volunteers are going to be coming in, working with, and I checked this with other superintendents in the area too. You know, right now, we've been limiting volunteers throughout the school. But, you know, the feeling around the state has been, if we're going to ask them, if we're going to ask anyone that's working with kids to be either vaccinated or show proof.
Yeah, because I just got the form for Room Mom, if it's possible, but also for School Store at Monroe Well. But it didn't mention.
Yeah. I told, I told them when we were talking about it today that I'd be sending something out to the district tomorrow. So this way, because there were some questions for some, there were some questions from some parents and I wanted to talk about it here first. And then just send one message out, not have Monroe Well send out a message. And then, you know, sometimes the messages are slightly different. People think that, you know, we're worlds apart and we're not. So, so yeah, I think we would hold them to the same standards of either being vaccinated or to show us a test.
Right.
To be able to volunteer. And there's, you know, there's, those are two good examples of, you know, we can, there's a worker shortage. We see that everywhere. So we're going to rely on some volunteers here. I know Fontana was going to try to work out, you know, rely on some parent volunteers to help with their lunch situation to keep the lunches spread out.
Speaking of bus driver shortage, are they required to be vaccinated as well?
They are, yeah. So, I mean, here's, so the funny thing is, so you would think that, and we've talked to the bus company and they're in pretty good shape. I talked to Mike Law last week, they're in very good shape. I think, you know, three who were not, two had already said that they were, you know, going to do the testing, one was still hemming and hawing. But, you know, we still have to track, not on a weekly basis, we have to get from the bus company.
Their employees.
Their employees. Now, we don't have to track that, but we have to keep getting that from them, which is, again, it's just another piece of us to have to, to track. It's going to be, and again, we got, the guidance came out on Friday. And, you know, this is supposed to be implemented on Monday. So, you know, we'll see where we go with that. But I just wanted to keep everybody here because it's going to be, it's going to be a huge lift. It's going to be incredible time, you know, incredibly time consuming.
All right. So going back though to the whole volunteers in school, I think we should have consensus here with the board so that Joe can send out something tomorrow as to what we plan to do with regard to volunteers. I can start. I mean, I think that if all our staff has to be fully vaccinated, I think that if you're a volunteer, you need to be fully vaccinated.
Yeah.
Well, it's an extension of being in the Monroe school system, really.
Right, exactly. It's an extension. And I don't think, you know, you can, you know, if we're asking our staff, then we need to ask our volunteers.
So it would either be, it would follow the same thing. So either you're vaccinated, you show your card. If you're not and you have a medical or religious exemption, you have to submit a test?
Yes.
Within seven, what is it, seventy-two hours?
Seventy-two hours?
Yeah. Everybody is.
That's it? Those are the only two options, right?
No, but also include things like, it's a little early, but the celebration of reading and.
Sure.
Yeah, I know. I mean, the list could go on of everything that we did pre-COVID. No. No, volunteers haven't been in.
Is that seventy-two hours prior to volunteering?
Yes.
So if I don't know that I'm going to volunteer on Wednesday, I have to get a test every?
The seventy-two hours is actually a question that we've been trying to figure out and I think it'll probably be addressed tomorrow because this, the way we understand it right now is that the D P H keeps talking about Fridays and Mondays. So like you should be tested Friday and Monday would be within seventy-two hours and that covers you for that week.
The week.
So then you test again Friday, you get the, the test comes in on Monday, you're covered for that week.
That makes sense. Because when I worked, when I saw patients in the nursing home, that's how it had to be. It had to be one, so I would have to get tested. And then the, within that, that following week, you had to get retested again every week. So that's pretty similar to what.
At least then it's on a schedule.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, most people who are, if you're, if you're, you know, like I'll use Christine's example, Monroe Well School Store is on a Thursday, you were tasked on Friday.
Right.
You have your task, well then you're not doing that last minute saying, oh, I'm going to come in this day. They actually have a schedule. And I would imagine that Lee, who wants to use that, you said for.
Help out in the cafeteria.
Help out in the cafeteria. They would have a schedule. You're not being told, oh, can you come tomorrow?
Yeah.
But as long as you have the task, if you're doing it, if you're not, if you want to volunteer, you do it the Friday before and she does need somebody last minute, you have your test and you got it on Monday, she needs you on Wednesday and she calls you Tuesday, well then you're covered because you had your task.
I would just like to see our volunteer policy mirror whatever our staff policy is.
Yeah. And, and be consistent district-wide. We can't have one school doing this, one school doing that.
Absolutely.
Just across the district.
Yep.
Well, and that's why Jill wants consensus so that he can send something out tomorrow and saying, this is what we're doing district-wide.
Sounds good.
And I would imagine this affects mostly the elementary schools.
Yeah. There's probably not too many volunteers going in to middle school and high school.
Though, as you get on, there's a lot. If we have prom, you're going to, if you have post-prom.
Right.
I mean.
But that's down the road. We're talking like right now. Yeah.
No, you're right.
Yeah.
You're down the road.
Who knows what will happen by then?
Right.
It could change dramatically.
No, you're, you're right, Jerry. We're just looking at right now.
Right now.
Later in the year.
Not that it affects us now, but how are we, have we thought about how we handle indoor sports activities with vaccinations?
In terms of.
Masks?
Masks or, yeah, parents, fans.
As of right now, I mean, we would have to, I think we would get guidance from the C I A C. So far, they've been masked indoors.
Yep.
I don't know that they've restricted, I apologize, I don't know the C I A C. I don't think they're restricting.
Attendance?
Attendance at this time.
Haven't heard anything.
So.
But he hasn't come out with a policy on winter sports.
C I A C.
No, right, yeah.
No, not yet.
The only two things we have indoors right now is swimming and volleyball.
Right. And that's still under the existing policy. There's nothing as of October first, correct?
I can't tell you, last year they did restrict.
Last year I knew they restricted he could come in.
They gave all the parents badges.
Right.
And you only get, allow two badges for each child. And you had to have, wear your badge to get into the.
And that was the same for outdoor sports, I believe, too, though. There is limited people allowed at, like the girls soccer events and stuff in the fall.
Yeah, but that's not happening now.
That's what I'm saying, it's not happening now. So who knows what will happen in the winter.
Hopefully, we're starting to see, and the nice thing is in this area, we're starting to see things kind of, I don't want to go too early to say. Hopefully getting better. The bus driver shortage, I just, again, I just want to keep everybody in the loop here. I'm sure you've heard it around, I mean, Massachusetts, just the governor just called in the National Guard to drive kids to, drive kids to school. You know, currently All-Star is in a, a good enough situation that they do have enough drivers to cover our daily routes. There's, there's districts in the states right now where kids aren't getting to school or parents are having to drive and they just, they're doubling up buses. It's, there's some horror stories out there. We're fortunate that, you know, they are able to get, to cover the daily routes. Typically, All-Star would have about eight additional drivers on, kind of on the, on the payrolls to drive charters, which, you know, mostly for extracurriculars, athletics and whatnot. Right now, they have none. They have no additional drivers. They will get a little relief in, they have, I think, three people in training right now. So those, but it takes a while to onboard these. Not necessarily to onboard them, but there's a lot of state requirements and whatnot you have to go through. So they won't be ready until October, November. It has impacted us mostly in sports right now. Sports has been an issue. And I'll just give you a couple of, you know, things that, you know, we need to be aware of and, and, you know, how, how the impact is having. So, for example, All-Star was unable to transport our Jackie Hall across country team to their two away matches. So we had to go out to another company, went out to Daco in New Britain. And just to give you an idea, if All-Star had transported those kids, it would have cost, would have been about five fifty for both trips. With Daco, it cost nineteen hundred dollars for the two trips, a difference of, you know, over fourteen hundred dollars and more than our entire cross-country transportation budget of thirteen hundred dollars to start. At MASC, I'll give you another similar example. We had a soccer game on August thirtieth, no All-Star buses available, no All-Star drivers. They have the buses, they don't have the drivers. No All-Star drivers to get. We went with Daco. No one's out there, this is happening all over the place. Seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. We took two buses to a football game with All-Star, cost us seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. So when we paid for one, in, in the football game, the buses were probably there longer than, than the soccer game. So, you know, we're looking at about, you know, about a three hundred and twenty-four, two hundred and twenty-five dollar average with All-Star and a seven hundred and ninety-five dollars with these outside organizations. They know, they got us, they got everybody. They got everybody in the state right now if they can, if they can fill the need. So, you know, I did talk to John DiGennaro, who said, please don't, you know, pin me to this. But, you know, we could be looking at, you know, you know, an increase of about twenty-five percent in transportation costs for fall athletics. They're trying to do stuff to mitigate this. They're working with, the A Ds are working together to try to push games back, you know, later at night if there's lights available. Sometimes that's a possibility, sometimes it's not. In the preseason, they scheduled a lot of games in the, on Saturdays because our charter, you know, our, our bus company is obviously available. So, and I know, I was talking to Jen and Darlene today too, special ed has, you know, had some similar things where we've had, you know, not that we didn't have transportation for students, we did, but because we had to ride share with, with other students in other towns to try to get all the transportation covered, we have some parents just transporting their kids directly and then we're reimbursing them for their, you know, for their mileage. So I just want to keep everyone in the loop. Hopefully, you know, we can get some relief soon. Like I said, in Massachusetts, they bring in the National Guard, probably to drive their smaller buses and vans because you need particular licenses and not everyone can just, you know, start driving a full-size school bus.
Now, is, and I will just stop from experience, last year, the MASC girls hockey team, there was no bus transportation. The parents were required to drive their children to away games, I mean, to the local games. I mean, you would have had to drive them anyway because it's at the rinks. But we had to drive the kids, like I had to drive, my daughter could not drive herself even though she has a driver's license in a car, like the parents were required to drive them. Is that a, I mean, I hate to say that, but is that a possibility? Because we had to do it last winter.
We've been doing it. Golf, boys golf has been, John's been filling out a lot of, signing off on a lot of transportation waivers and whatnot. All right. The last thing I have, I know we put it on the agenda in new business in a little bit and that's just the vote on offering the off-year retirement benefit. As you know, the, you know, the contract with the M E A includes eligible teachers to be able to participate in the retirement benefit in school years that end with an odd number. So this past year was a twenty-one, this was a regular retirement year. But as, has been the practice for as long as I can remember. The board has offered a slightly modified retirement benefit in even years. This retirement is very similar to the, the retirement that's offered in the odd years with the exception of the forty thousand dollar payout. So in a, in a traditional year, teachers would be eligible for their sick day buyout and then their forty thousand dollar payout paid out over four years. The first payment would be in that first year. So they would get their sick days, they'd get ten thousand, then ten thousand, ten thousand, ten thousand. In, in this plan, the, they still have the same benefit, but the forty thousand dollar payout is spread out over four years. So they don't get that initial ten thousand in that first year. So they would get their sick day buyout and then the next year they would get ten thousand, the next year ten thousand, the next year ten thousand, the next year ten thousand. So it's about a ten thousand, ten thousand dollar savings on the budget in year one in addition to any, any, you know, any savings from having a more experienced teacher retire and replaced by, you know, a less seasoned veteran or a less seasoned teacher. So I just wanted to give you the background. Yep, Nick?
I just have a quick question before we move off before the superintendent. I know that our next meeting is ten-four and we were going to talk about, I know you've run the enrollments out of ten-one.
Yep.
Will that be at that one or at the next one?
I will do it at, I intend to do it at the first meeting after October one, so then October four meeting.
The ten-four?
Yep.
Because I know we talked, I think it was in the summer now, about as we were watching the enrollments and the space, the physical space.
Yep.
I think that that conversation should happen when we continue to talk about grants and budget because it all has an impact or it might have a huge impact that we don't know yet.
Yep.
Now, talking about enrollment, my sister-in-law, as everybody knows, is a New York City public school principal. And she told me this weekend, when we had lots of downtime, what do you call it? That New York City public schools across the board, just for all five boroughs, their, their enrollment is down thirty percent.
They're all, they're all in Connecticut.
Thanks.
Yes. Thirty percent enrollment drop across New York City public schools. You know, so it's different in every different school, but across the board, it's a thirty percent drop. Yeah. Because everybody titles it out of New York City.
Right.
You know, to the suburbs and.
I know, and it'll be interesting to see what the new kindergarten numbers will be like if we have a repeat of this year.
Jerry?
Joe, to get back to you off your retirement a sec.
Yep.
If we get over eight, would you come back and ask us or would you just take?
Yeah, I would come back. I have, Chuck and I were talking about this.
Well, because we.
Eight is there, I don't know what the, I don't know why it was eight, but.
I don't know either. I've been here for six years and every year we just say what different, whoever wants to go should be, okay. I just wanted to make sure I clarified that as it was written down.
Yeah. That's the way the M O U has been written forever.
I know. We just, yeah.
And we can stipulate that tonight when we get to the.
I was wondering if we could take that out.
Yeah. We can say whoever would like to retire. We can say whoever would like to retire. I think it was just kind of for, I, I, I would imagine, the M.O.U., the intent of it was that you didn't suddenly have 30 teachers be there.
And try to replace.
And try to replace them, and so they tried to limit how many could retire.
Yep.
I would think that that was probably the intent at the time.
That makes sense, like, want to put a cap on it, just cover yourself, but we've never been to that. We've never had to worry about that.
So I guess keep the eight, and they'll come back to us?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
And hope 30 don't retire, Jerry.
No, well, keep the eight, like you said, and they'll just come back and say, I have another four. I mean, usually, that's what they'll, they'll do, they'll come and say, hey, I have another two that called my office. All right, thank you.
Okay. Anything else but Joe before we move on? All right, Sheila's up next, um, she's going to do the teacher evaluation, um, plan.
Nick.
Did you share?
Sedexo.
Sedexo?
It came to me, I was like 75% sure, and Linda texted me and said, it's sedexo.
Makes sense.
What was that from?
It's, it was sedexo.
Oh.
Hey, Michelle.
You got it?
Yeah.
Kudos to Linda, she must be watching us. Thanks, Linda. She did. I, I was racking my head, and I'm like, I think it's sedexo, and she unprompted, just...
Wow, she's locked in?
Yeah.
It's not, no, just let me know, and I'll, I'll, I'll put it...
That's all right, I can stand over here.
Think I owe her lunch.
I can just stand there.
You sure?
Yeah, yeah, that's all right. The State of Connecticut Department of Ed, with the craziness of the pandemic last year, created some flexibilities to our teacher evaluation system. Knowing that those are continuing into this school year, they've offered another flexibility. So, in order for us to accept those as a district, we have a process that we need to do with you, the Board of Ed. So, the state is actually, in light of what transpired last year with the pandemic, is looking at the teacher evaluation system overall, and looking at revamping it, and making it better, giving teachers more feedback more often, rather than going through like the dog and pony show, having to put on a big performance with a formal observation, with all sorts of things. So, in the process of the state working on this, they've got this flexibility for us for this year, as they try to fine-tune it and make it even better. Because of the pandemic last year, the focus was solely on social-emotional learning. They said, do not look at academics. Our goal's always in the past have been looking at student academics and looking for student growth, and being able to show from the beginning of a school year to an end, academic growth for our students. Last year, they said all bets are off. What we need to focus on is the social-emotional. So that was our only goal for last year, as well as looking to make sure that we are kind of looking at the whole learner. So this year, what they've said is, we want to continue with that. Don't want to get rid of the social-emotional piece, because it was so important last year, and that's continued into this school year. One of the things that they learned was a question mark last year, not necessarily for us here in Monroe, but for other districts, was that equitable learning opportunities for all students. As well as culturally responsive teaching and learning practices, academic achievement, and engagement with families. Again, not necessarily for men's growth, but this is a statewide program. So as we took a look at creating this, we have student learning indicators, where we, teachers create a goal based on student growth of some sort. In the past, it has always been academic. They would take their, um, S.F.A.C. results, or at the high school, their A.P. results, and say, how can I take those results? What did I learn about my students? Use benchmark-created assessments that we do in, in district to show growth during the course of the year, because unfortunately, we don't get those results back before school ends, so they have to measure it against our benchmarks. So teachers will create things, and one of the things that we're trying to do, again, is that social-emotional piece with the wellness of the whole child, looking for that equitable learning, and then challenging and attaining goals for that unfinished learning that Joe has talked about a lot. So when this is broken up, it goes for both. You have a, a teacher piece, to teacher evaluation, and administrator piece. Very, very similar expectations. So this is the recommendation from the state, and districts can kind of take a look at it. Our teacher evaluation, our P.D. and teacher evaluation system, um, committee had a meeting earlier this month, and we talked about, with the administrative team, too, that we want to have two goals. We want to have an S.E.L. goal for certain, but we also want to have an academic goal, because we want to talk about that unfinished learning. So teachers will create one overarching goal with two indicators, or they may create it as two indicators, um, being different. They're going to definitely talk about the social-emotional learning. It could include some pieces with engagement, um, and then it's going to look for the academic, which could include the cultural responsiveness. So these are the options that the state said that teachers could focus on. It's an agreed-upon goal that's done between the administrator and the teacher during goal-setting in the fall. They also agree upon what are those measures that they're going to use to monitor progress towards the goal between now and the end of the year. Administrators, same idea, have to create two student learning indicators for their school building. So it could be against all sorts of different tests and all sorts of different departments, however the administrator wants to do it. So that's a big change, because everything was done on academics prior to last year. The observation piece is another big change. Because of the craziness of last year, they, the state wants administrators to get in for more observations. Quick little check-ins with teachers, I'm sorry, didn't...
No.
Quick check-ins with teachers, um, meeting with them to review different materials that they're using. So it's, it's more frequent and shorter amounts of time. So again, when we break it down, in the past, teachers had a formal observation every three years, and then on the alternating two, they were informal observations. Last year, because of the craziness, it was only informals. This year, they're realized with everything that happened last year, that that was actually good then, to have the informals, to get the administrator in and out of classrooms more often. So, with the flexibilities, it's two informal observations. A review of practice happens at the end of the year, where the teacher would share with the administrator all the things that they do, that the administrator doesn't see in those short little visits, so that the teacher can highlight all the wonderful things that they've done that year. If it's a new teacher, and they get three, so if they're in year one or year two, they get a minimum of three. So the administrator can do more. They have to provide feedback to the teacher on any one of the observations that they've done. For the administrators, it's two site visits. So that would be Jack and Joe going to a building, meeting with the principal, looking at materials, walking around classrooms, and then an artifact review. That would be sharing things, maybe, could be faculty meeting agendas, could be meeting agendas, things like that. And then, again, for somebody new, it's three. So that's a big change as well, with these flexibilities. Oh, sorry. Last year, we did not have ratings, in previous years, we have. So what they do is, they take, they combine the student learning goal with the whole school, which is based on survey data, and that's an outcomes rating. And then they combine the, what the teacher does with stakeholder feedback, part of the survey, too, is your practice ratings. And then you get rated on it. So one is a 45 and 5, one is a 40 and 10, 50 plus 50 is 100, so you get 100% rating on the teacher. Last year, there were no ratings. This year, they've asked us to put that, but in a more holistic way. So that's the piece that's not exactly 100%. But by accepting the flexibilities, we would go back to using those ratings, which we have to use by the state. The district administrative team in August created a district goal and a stakeholder feedback goal. This is based on the climate feedback surveys that you get as parents and community members. The building principals take these and create their own goals, that are specific to their building. Then the teachers will take that and create ones that are specific to their classroom, and that's how all of this is, is connected together. So what the state is asking is, if a district is interested in taking the flexibilities, that's allowing for the informal observations, not the formal, allowing for, um, more flexibility of using S.E.L. as a goal, as opposed to purely academic, um, then we would say, yes, we're in agreement that we want to do this. There's like a, a couple of steps to this. It has to be presented to our P.D.T. eval Committee, which I did earlier this month, which was a unanimous agreement, where we go with the flexibilities. It just makes more sense, especially after everything we lived with last year. The second part is making sure that the Board of Education is in agreement with the P.D.T. Eval Committee, that you would support that decision on taking the flexibilities. Then, if you say yes tonight, when we get to the voting part, I have to go onto the state website, submit a form saying yes. The Board of Education, the Public Schools, P.D.T. Eval Committee are in mutual agreement to go with the flexibilities. I submit that saying yes. Then I have to wait for the state to come back to say that they approve that, which they said should be happening pretty quickly. Then I need the board to approve and adopt the state's recommendation for us to take the flexibilities. But all of this has to be done before October 1st. So I'm asking you, if you're in agreement with this when we get to the vote, that you're actually going to vote for two things. One, you're going to vote that you agree to do the, if you do, that you would agree to do the flexibilities with the P.D.T. Eval Committee's recommending. And the second part is that, when the state gives us approval, that you would adopt that approval. So it's a little confusing. Any questions?
Have you seen that state approval?
It's literally a one question, and I say, yes, we're taking it, or we're keeping what we used before.
Okay. Any, we're talking about teacher evaluations, correct?
Correct.
So any issues, union issues with M.E.A.? Is this inconsistent with our contract?
It is consistent with our contract. Yes, it's consistent with our contract. We had both union presidents on the Zoom call, when we did the presentation with the P.D., because they are obviously members of our P.D.T. Eval Committee.
Okay, okay, so that's okay.
Yep, and Sue's is here.
Yep, yep. See, I'm thinking about you. And, quick question for, for me, and I don't know if anybody else is wondering. What happens to the teachers that meet or exceed those expectations, and what happens to the teachers that fall below those expectations?
The administrator will work with, but we have a, a list of people that we evaluate. And, you know, it ranges from how, um, Lisa Peterson has the World Language Department, which is one of the smaller departments comparatively to an elementary principal who has 22 classroom teachers. So we're, we're somewhere, you know, between 13 and 22, um, people that we evaluate. We meet with those people for goal-setting in the fall. We meet with them, this is minimally. We meet with them again mid-year, probably under January, February-ish, to kind of go over their goal. Is their goal that they thought, that they put together back in the fall, is it really and truly attainable by May? Or did they realize in monitoring their students all along, they've already mastered it, maybe I need to tweak it and make it a little more challenging? Or there's no way they're going to need it, I need to go back and do a lot of background work, so maybe I need to lower that number? Or we just see where it is, and we keep it as is and get to May and see how we, we fall out with it. If a teacher is needing more support, the administrator will meet with them more often to help support them. And we are fortunate that that happens very rarely. Our teachers work very collaboratively together. At the elementary level, they'll create goals together, so the kindergarten goal will all pretty much be the same. Obviously, the data is specific for their classroom, but the overarching goal is the same. At the middle school and high school, they work by department and do the same. So there's a lot of internal supports for teachers, too, that maybe having, if they're having trouble with a content area or working towards a school, they definitely have the support of their colleagues, but they also have the support of their administrator.
You're calling it flexibilities?
Yes.
Flexibilities being?
Being changes to our plan. Our plan was, has been in place since 2015, it's been revamped twice.
Right, which focused on academics.
Correct.
So the flexibilities are what?
They allow us to what, focus on S.E.L. as well as academics. Last year, they had us go to the flexibilities for last year, which you had approved as a board, and that was purely S.E.L., with only informal observations.
Right.
If we don't adopt the flexibilities for this year, then we are going back to the plan that the State Department approved through your P.D.T. Eval and the Board of Ed's approval. I think the last time we revised it was 2017.
So we would go back to that?
We would have to go back to that, which asks teachers to specifically do something with state testing, which is really hard right now, because the state testing we have from this past spring, we don't have the previous year.
So would you be measured off the prior year, then?
Correct.
Okay.
But we can't, because we don't have it.
No, but you have the year before that.
Correct, but a lot has happened in a few years.
Well, understood, you understood, obviously, we lost a year.
Right.
Right?
Right. So that's why the, the flexibility allows us to focus on S.E.L. as well as to focus, we can look, still look at academics, not like we're putting academics as totally 100% aside, but we're looking at academics, but not with so much of a focus on the state testing.
What's the percentage that you would focus on academics versus social and emotional learning?
That would depend on the teacher, because quite honestly, the teacher takes, they'll have the two pieces, the two goals. They can decide which one is going to be weighted more than another.
How do you, how do you do that as a consistent measurement across the teaching population?
It's consistent in that teachers are measuring, that we are measuring different things. Exactly what's being measured and how it's being measured will vary.
That doesn't sound consistent at all to me. What's your success, what would be your success? Academic success criteria is pretty solid, right? You get scored.
Yes.
What's your success criteria for S.E.L.?
It depends on how the teacher writes it. When I look at the S.E.L. goals from last year, our elementary teachers use the mood meter, which I think we've talked about a little bit with you, with the four colors, and then students would come in how they're feeling for that day, and put their, put with their name by how they were feeling. They would also relate that mood meter to a story that they were reading and how the character was, and how did the character's mood and behavior change during the course of the story. That was a, a big focus with elementary. When you hit middle school and high school, their focus continued with comparing characters and stories, and it was also talking about how they were feeling about things, and doing reflections on how they felt about certain things that happened over the course of the pandemic.
I think that's tough to measure, and I think it's tough to measure across the population of teachers that we have, and establish a true success criteria. But I also would have to think that administrators would have a tough job trying to figure out, what, what's this, how is this, this teacher being successful in meeting whatever goal they set out for themselves in this area? You know, based on mood meters and things like that. Sorry, uh...
No, I just wanted to clarify something, though. I think we're forgetting that it's a mutual goal between the administrator and the teacher.
Correct.
Uh, look, put on your industry hats, and your boss does not walk in and tell you what to do, and you just do it. It's shared, it's give and take. That's what this is. I walk in with a goal, and if Jack was my principal, and he thought I should tweak that goal, then we sit and tweak it together. But the goals are not unattainable, they're mutual goals for that class. A goal in tech ed would be totally different than a goal in art.
Right.
Or a goal in math, or a goal in English.
But the S.E.L. part of that goal, on how the child, that could be...
That was my point, yes.
Yeah, that can be, I'm sorry, Derek, but that could be consistent across the entire building.
Agreed. But it is a, it is an administrative agreement, though, it's just not the teacher walking in and saying, I want to do A.B.C.
Right.
Administrator has their goal, he, his or her goal for the school, and your goal has to line up with their goal.
I'm just asking, I, no, I'm, I'm cool with, I think that that's the way it works, that's the way it works in business, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, um, you have to have a consistent measurement criteria. But you have to have a consistent measurement criteria. So goals are established in a corporation for, you know, the entire employee base, and then you're scored on a one to five, you know, for how you achieve those goals, right? But the criteria is there to measure the achievement of those goals. So is the measurement going to be consistent, I guess is what, is a better way to phrase it?
So.
How is that, so how is that success criteria being measured across the board?
For the observation piece, there is a rubric that every classroom teacher follows under the same rubric. So as far as how they're being measured against what's happening in a classroom is the same for every teacher, with the exception of your school psychologist, your speech and language pathologist, your OT, your PT, your counselors, because they don't formally have a classroom, so their rubric looks a little bit different as being a support service. But classroom teacher, whether you're a kindergarten teacher or you're an 11th grade AP teacher, has the same rubric for their observations. The actual goal setting for the student learning objective, that's where, as Gary was saying, it's mutually agreed upon. So when it comes to the scoring part, a first grade teacher may use the mood meter and say nine out of 10 times by May, my students will be able to appropriately identify the mood of a character from the beginning to the end and how it has changed. That's the criteria for first grade. It's going to look different when it comes to a fourth grade classroom. But it's mutually agreed upon, and then that's the criteria. If the administrator questions, do you think it could be a higher percentage or a lower, you know, then it's a dialogue back and forth until you mutually come up with an agreed upon amount.
And what about, okay, so I understand that. I understand what you're saying. But, but what about for, back to the question on what percentage is academics versus what percentage is SEL?
That depends on the teacher. And I would say that depends on the teacher and the conversation with the administrator.
But that, does that affect the children in the classroom and what they're learning?
No, because the academic is still the same. The only question would be is how much that teacher is focusing on that for their goal compared to SEL.
Wouldn't that then affect what the kid is, what the child is learning? Because if the teacher's goal for SEL is weighted higher than academics, isn't that teacher going to work to try and achieve that goal?
Yeah, so if I could jump, Sheila, I don't need to do this, but we're also forgetting the aspect of, like, I had to meet with my team leader, and my team leader told me what the administrator wanted for the goal. We had a team goal. Our team goal was academics. I know it sounds funny in Unified Arts when you, you know, you have tech ed and art, but we had an academic goal. So we each had to write our goal to line up with our team leader's goal, which line, and Jack, I'm pointing to you because you were my last administrator, who lined up with the administrative goal. I mean, I just couldn't write down, you know, students will cut wood. It wasn't appropriate. They had to match up with the other goal. So to answer your question, I think, George, for me, and Sheila, I don't mean to speak to you, oh, you've got something up to the, go ahead.
This is the district goal. So the district goal that the administrative team worked on at our retreat in August has that the Monroe Public Schools want to show engaging experiences that meet the unique academic, social, and emotional needs of every child every day. So then the principal goes back and creates a goal playing off of that, and the teachers play their goal, so it's all connected.
Sheila, back to what George was talking about, in terms of academ, have you talked to like Trumbull and Newtown to see what, what are they doing? Are they opting in or out of this?
I don't know anybody who's opting out.
Okay.
From the districts that I've spoken to. We, I was on a call last week and it was, everybody was talking about going with this, no matter what plan they're using. We follow the seed model for the state of Connecticut. Some people, some districts created their own. But even with creating their own, they're still following the flexibilities.
So you want to do what similar districts are doing?
So just for clarification, you have three kindergarten teachers. Each teacher can weight their percentage of the SEL versus academics?
Yes, the goal, there's a weighting action.
Right, but I'm saying each individual teacher, right, okay.
And they could based on their class. That's why we don't do the goal setting right in the beginning of September. We'll wait until the end of September and to the beginning of October.
But the end is still a curriculum to get through. I think they're getting hung up on this.
No, 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 I'm just trying to understand it. Because like in my corporation, like, you know, if you're an OT, you're an OT. Like, I don't, each individual OT doesn't get to weight their percentage on how I, how I would want to weight my review. Do you know what I'm saying, like, versus two categories?
But we want it specific to the students in that classroom.
That's what it's about, okay.
But Jerry, you're saying there's still a curriculum to get to.
Right, I still have to follow my curriculum.
Right.
So the academics are still.
So it's really based on the students in that population and how that teacher is addressing?
Correct.
Is it then how you're addressing that curriculum?
Right, I might choose.
For a social and emotional way or an academic approach?
Right, yes, but I'm still get, but I'm still hitting the curriculum.
I'm not understanding how that's, that doesn't seem to me like a consistent methodology for teaching the students, and I understand, every student's different.
Yeah, it's not robotic, yeah.
Every teacher is going to be different. It's not robots, right?
It's not robotic.
It's the, the way that we're structuring our evaluations is going to then in turn affect the way that we're teaching our children. And it doesn't seem to me by adopting this model and having it as subjective as you're laying it out, is going to provide that consistent experience.
This is no.
But is this, this isn't just this model, this is how it's been done?
This is how it's been forever.
Right, that's what I'm saying, this isn't anything new.
By setting it as SEL versus academic?
It's always been this way.
Has it always been SEL versus academic?
No, and it's not versus, it's including.
It's included.
Okay, no, I'm talking about the goals.
Right, but in the past.
So you have a 60% goal and a 40% goal, and the teacher is judged on those two pieces.
Correct.
Correct? I set my 60% goal as academic, I'm going to focus on academic achievements. I set my 60% goal as SEL, I'm going to focus on social and emotional learning. Is that right?
I think the teacher focuses on both. I mean, yes.
Understood, but the teacher wants to.
The way they're measuring it for their evaluation, one is a 60 and one is a 40, but that doesn't mean that they're, what they're focusing on in the classroom is different.
I just think that if that's the way we're doing, Jerry's saying that this is the way it's always been done, I would contend that it probably isn't always the way that it's been done. But if you're setting it up like that, aren't you going to get vastly different or different, sorry, different outcomes based on the classroom and on the teacher? And if I knew that my teacher, my son's teacher was going to focus, you know, all on academics, I would want my kid in that classroom. You know what I'm saying? And another parent that thought that the social emotional learning piece was more important would want to put their child into that classroom. So that's why I'm saying, it just seems like it's not, it's not going to create something consistent, it's going to create something very subjective, both from a teacher measurement standpoint, would then transcend down to the student learning experience.
Jack, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I could, I think, George, because I do hear, I think I hear what you're asking. There's, the objective piece comes in, there are strategies and skills to delivering instruction regardless of the topic, regardless of the content. And that is so much of what an administrator is looking for. Good, we often talk about good instruction is good instruction. Jerry alluded to it. You know, if you walk into an art classroom and a, and a teacher is presenting a quality lesson and using the strategies and skills, regardless of whether it's an SEL lesson or if it's a lesson on three, three-dimensional drawing, if they're using the skills and the strategies, and those are laid out through our evaluation process, we have a rubric for the different skills and strategies that a teacher must use for us to rate them. So that, we're rating them and doing so objectively because those different skills are defined. They may be good delivering an SEL lesson, they may be delivering a math lesson, but they, but how they deliver the instruction is what we're looking at, and then we're looking at the student's engagement in that and growth, regardless of whether that growth is in fractions and a baseline assessment and looking at growth over that for SEL, whether that growth is being delivered through a social and emotional lens. I hear what you're saying about if it's weighted differently, does the teacher stress that? The impact on that, if we're focused on, is the instruction, quality instruction, and are children engaged and then demonstrating their learning becomes, becomes minimal because the quality of the instruction is there?
No, I don't think, I'm not, I'm not debating the quality of the instruction by any stretch of the imagination, okay? And I'm not a teacher, so I can't put myself in your folks' shoes, okay? I'm just a parent and a volunteer who's listening to this discussion, and I'm not getting that it's, that the measurement is there, and that the measurement is objective and that it's consistent across the board. And I would be concerned that as a parent listening, that those questions would be raised.
Is this an either or decision, meaning we either go with this or we fall back to what we had previously done?
Correct.
And if we go back to what we previously, maybe it would help to explain what that would look like? And does, did we evaluate SEL at all in that previous model?
Not formally as SEL. But did I have, but I had.
You must have had teachers deal with.
Exactly, and I evaluate the reading staff at all three elementary, as well as the elementary art teachers. So honestly, with both of them, they talked about emotions, like even with art, you know, looking at the emotion, that was part of some of their goals, was seeing whether or not you could feel something coming out of a piece of art. And with the elementary reading people, they would also look for character development and how a character would change and why it would change. Would we call it SEL and talk about it as being emotion? Not necessarily before, but we would, we would talk about emotions compared to character traits and looking at the difference between the two of those.
So for consistency, it doesn't make sense to make it 50/50 across, like, I'm not saying across everything, but like, say kindergarten, maybe say they are more SEL, and we'll weight them 60%, 40%, but say first through whatever, it should be 50/50. You don't think it should be consistent across grade level, it should be subjective by teacher?
I think it can depend on the classroom that the teacher has in front of them for that given year. I mean, the goal's allowed for flexibility with the classroom teacher and the needs of their students. And that we don't tell teachers that this is how it has to be because it is a mutually agreed upon goal. In the past, I'll take my reading staff, for example, in the past, I would, they would typically pick a kindergarten or first grade because we want to make sure that the foundational skills are there. They would have an SLO that was about showing growth over the course of the school year would be the overarching. For my kindergarten teachers, they would, if they were supporting kindergarten classrooms, now, the reading people only take a handful of students out of that kindergarten classroom, but they're taking the scores and the results for the entire grade level. So they're working with the classroom teachers to make sure that these goals are also being followed as well as working with their small groups. They would look for, they would have a goal about letter ID, they would have a goal about letter sound, they would have a goal related to sight words, they could have a goal related to, when we hit first grade, the Fountas and Penel. And if I went from Fawn Hollow to Monroe to Stepney, there would be almost the exact same goals if they were all picking kindergarten, but their percentage of what they were looking for was going to be different because Fawn Hollow students came in not knowing as many sounds, but they knew the letters but not the sounds. So they were going to put more emphasis on the sounds than the letters. So it, it's all very similar because they do work by department or they do work by grade level to create them. And typically, those goals across the percentages are the same within a grade level. It could be slightly different based on the needs of the classroom.
Okay.
I just wanted to speak very briefly, I just wanted to lend my support to the draft motion of including these flexibilities. I think sometimes in some of our more formal evaluations, before we adopted some of our flexibilities last year, obviously due to the pandemic, that they were too strict. Too strict in the sense that they were constraining and that they had very, they had, they had, you know, contours that were very constraining to the teachers. And I think the flexibilities that you outlined actually allow a teacher to not be measured more subjectively, but to allow them to set goals for their particular context. And I think one strength of this is that we're able to create goals, that teachers and administrators are able to create goals to the kids in the room. And I think that that's really important as we talk about individualized instruction, differentiated instruction, social emotional learning this year, last year and this year more than ever. And going forward, I think that the social emotional goals probably should be weighted more heavily than they were in the past based on the research that's coming out and things that we're seeing in the classroom about the individual student's experience in the K-12 classroom.
The performance and practice goal is 40%. That is, that is basically the teacher observations. So that, I hear a lot of percentages being thrown out, so that 40% is based on observations in the classroom, based on a very objective rubric that's developed.
The state?
By the, by the state, according to the plan that we developed. That's just, that's just good instruction, how you're teaching. There's another 10% on parent feedback, it's called stakeholder feedback, usually, that's usually our communication goal with parents. The piece that I think that we keep getting hung up on is on the stakeholder.
That's the 45%.
The 45%, and that's the one that is usually broken up into two different, you're hearing terms like SLOs, student learning outcomes, it's really goals based on different indicators. A lot of times, they're like 22.5%, 222.5%, and that equals the 45%. I don't think we're going to get like a, so, so just so, in terms of numbers, it's not like, you could be like 70% SEL and 30% academic. It's when we get to that stakeholder feedback goal, or not the stakeholder feedback goal, the, what's the 45? Yeah, when you get to the SLOs, they're making two overarching goals. One, I get the flexibilities asking for, continue to think about SEL this year, but let's also make sure that we're incorporating academics because last year it was all SEL. And let's, you know, let's start, let's start moving in this direction.
A percentage of that 45%.
Exactly.
This percentage and this percentage make up the 45%.
Make up the 45, yeah.
And that's subject to the.
Conversation between the teacher and the administrator, yeah.
That's where it's all individualized.
Correct.
At the teacher level.
That 45%.
Of the 45%.
Of the 45%, because the 40% is dictated from the rubric. The 10% is based on the climate survey data that comes from the questions that are asked to parents, to students, and to staff.
Sure, it's still half, but, got it. It's not the whole thing, it's not the whole 100%.
And then that remaining percentage is where you have a little bit of flexibility based on your classroom.
Exactly. Any other questions?
What happens next year when the state decides to just toss out the SEL part and just go full academic?
I bet they will.
It'll be interesting to see.
I, well, I'll raise my hand. And I have a feeling that that just might be one of the changes that came out of COVID. Like, this probably needed to be addressed before COVID, and then it became a little more apparent during the COVID, and I bet it's going to be, who knows?
Or they could, they could lessen the percentage, who knows what they'll do?
They have a whole committee right now that is looking at revamping the entire thing, but in the process, because it, in order to do that, they have to contact every stakeholder group. So that's, you have the CEA, the Connecticut Education Association for our teachers, then you have all of the other assorted unions that are involved, which I don't even know all the acronyms for them. But they're all a part of the table in looking at the teacher evaluation process before it goes forward.
Yeah, I don't think SEL is going to go away anytime soon. I mean, students got to be emotionally available to learn, so, you know, you got to take that in consideration, obviously.
I think my point is that they keep flip-flopping every year, it's hard to get consistency. Changed it every single year to something completely different. I think you need to kind of get something. I think you need to kind of get something and go with it. And I understand we had an unusual year last year. But by changing it, it just creates also chaos for the whole entire staff. It creates chaos for teachers, administrators, because then now they're implementing something totally different than what they had the year before. So you're kind of, you're kind of reinventing the wheel every single year.
And this is just for this year?
Just for this.
And that's what I'm saying.
So this isn't like long term? This is literally for one year.
It is a one-year flexibility, like last year when it came to you?
And then next year you'll come to us with the new one.
We'll see what that one is.
This is more, this is not for us, this is more of the state.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, no.
Decide to decide, but by flipping it around constantly, year after year, and I know we have a pandemic, so it's a different, you know, it's a unique situation. But you don't have for all the staff people, you know, the same, you know, the same thing year in and year out.
Yeah, no, consistency.
It's hard to be that good at the game if you change the rules of it.
And you want consistency.
Well, exactly.
You know?
Yeah.
It's just, anybody wants consistency.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, now I'll have to get my computer to turn back on again.
And I have the two crazy motions.
All right, there is no old business, so we will be moving on to new business. And item A is the teacher evaluation plan, vote anticipated. So I have two motions, hold on. Draft motion number one, the Monroe Board of Education confirms mutual agreement with the Monroe Public Schools District's PD slash TEVAL Committee for the Connecticut State Department of Education's 2021-22 Teacher Evaluation Flexibilities with anticipated approval from the C- Connecticut State Department of Education. Shannon?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, do I have a second? Jerry, any discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Against? Thank you, motion passes. Second motion, the Monroe Board of Education, upon approval from the Connecticut State Department of Education, will adopt the 2021-22 Teacher Evaluation Flexibilities put forth by the Connecticut State Department of Education. Double motion. Thank you, Jerry, do I have a second? Shannon, any discussions on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Against? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to item B, which is approval of the 2021 budget transfers that Ron presented oh so long ago in this meeting. So I have a motion to approve the 2021 budget transfers as presented at tonight's meeting. Thank you, Christine. Second, Dave, any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Against? Okay, motion passes. We will move on to item C, policy first reviews. We have four policies that we have a first review on. Policy is 02, 0521, equal opportunity, non-discrimination. 3324.1, contracts. 6142.101, student wellness policy. And 6172.4, Title I, parent involvement. George, I'm assuming you're going to cover these and the changes?
Yes, I can, I'll cover the changes. So, the Policy Committee met on the 13th and reviewed these policies, put them forward to a vote. The revisions for policy 0521 include the updating of protected classes that are currently addressed in the law. And we also removed the procedures for grievances, the procedures for grievances from the policy. Although the definitions for those grievances remain in the policy, we removed the procedures which are, which are part of the administrative handbook, the school handbook, as opposed to being embedded in the policy. 3324 dot one. This is the policy that stipulates the need for approval by the board and/or legal advisor should the, should the amount of a contract exceed $1 million, at which case it would need to be approved by either or. And we also referenced in that policy the changes to, or we referenced specifically policy 0521, non-discrimination, in terms of equal opportunity in the bid process. 6142.101, student nutrition. This is just revisions to the commitment, the district's commitment to following the federal nutrition guidelines as issued by the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the Connecticut Nutrition Standards for Schools. And this applies to schools in the district that are partaking in that program. And 6172 dot four, Title I, which deals with funding for schools to meet academic standards. The revisions which are, to line up with state statute include the superintendent's responsibility to ensure quality in the provisioning of materials and supplies to schools throughout the district. Also includes the district's responsibility to meet with parents being provided Title I services in annual meeting and to update according to the changing needs of the students, parents, and school.
Nick? I just wanted to make a very brief comment on 3324.1, the contracts revisions. Just want to thank the Policy Committee Chairman for taking another look at this. I think adding the language about contracts being subject to approval of the Board of Education, if the contract exceeds $1 million, is an important step for us. I think, I don't want to put words in the superintendent's mouth, of course, but I think it also allows the board to take a little bit off the superintendent when we have these really, really big contracts. We already see like food service, we see transportation, we obviously see all union contracts. But if there's any particular project where we have this huge, huge sum, you know, the board will be able to approve or disapprove of all the T and C, all the outlines. And I think it's important for the board to really have skin in the game when you have these huge, huge sums of money that are being expended for a particular project. So thank you for looking at these revisions, and I think it's a, it's a good step forward. Thank you.
Thanks, I think we've, we've, this type of language is in a couple of different policies, and we definitely strove towards that, but this actually, you know, puts it in writing.
Quick question, I agree with Nick on this. My question is, how do we arrange a right of the $1 million, you know, mark? Was there a benchmark that you used to get here? Or was it just, were there contracts? I mean, in other words, Joe or any, would have discretion, anything under $1 million to sign his fee's fit?
Right. So a million dollar contract is something that's typically going to be multi-year and something that involves, you know, a district-wide thing. Whereas smaller dollar amounts, we felt that it was still within the superintendent's purview to go through the RFP process and to negotiate them. So, Jack, is there any, there's no state guideline around that though, right?
No, as a matter, as a matter of fact, until now, there was no provision for SEL at all to address that.
George, do we have a minimum amount to go out to RFP as a district?
I, I don't.
Is there a set amount that we have to go?
Yeah.
There is a minimum, that once you reach the threshold, you must go out.
I think it's five, I want to say it's 500.
I believe, I believe it's 50. I believe the policy piggybacks the town's policy, yeah.
50, yeah.
50,000?
Now, we do have the ability to piggyback, you know, a state bid or another, you know, another district bid or consortium bid.
Okay, thank you.
And isn't this, the policy also says something like, if you use the state-approved vendor or like you don't go to RFP?
Well, yeah, you could piggyback a state, a state.
It's already been added.
It's already been, you know.
Right, that's approved, that's an approved vendor for that specific service or whatever. Because they quote unquote have already negotiated the lowest possible rate. All right, any other questions?
Could I, could I just put my two cents in on that one piece of the, so if it's a, let's say it's a project that's going to be bonded that goes through the approval process on the town side and Joe's still signing the contract, would the board want to still approve that contract?
If it's, if it's, like, if it's like a turf field, like.
Yeah, something, exactly.
Yes.
For a roof, yeah.
I think anything, according to the policy, anything that's prepared under the supervision of the superintendent that is over this dollar amount, whether it be town, if the board.
Yeah, I guess in that case, the contract would still be negotiated here even though the funding source was, you know, yeah.
Jack?
Policy 33, excuse me, I want to make sure, 3323 has the outline for requirements to be followed for close bidding. And it has the dollar amounts. And it, transactions up to 9,000, 9,299, should be awarded improvements on base of the best value, using reliable sources, $10,000 to 49,999, awarded based on results of multiple quotations. Procedures, planning to award in concessions involving anticipated gross receipts in excess of $10,000 per year. Transactions of $50,000 or more will be awarded, results of the formal bidding process as you suggested.
All right, so these policies will be on our, on our agenda next time with a second review vote anticipated. Item number D is the 2021 budget surplus discussion. As mentioned previously, state, the state statute says that we can request up to 2% of, you know, your entire budget. If you have that remaining to be placed in the 248-A account. So what did I say, that was like 1.1 million?
1.170.
I'm just multiplying it again. Yeah, 1,001,700,38, to be exact.
And that's, Donna, that 2% you're saying is calculated off of the approved budget for the year?
Yes.
Doesn't have any, does it have something to do with the available amount left, too?
No. What it says is that if you have a remaining amount, up to 2% of that can be placed in this account. So like, right now, you would have, so right now, our surplus for the year is 2,113,529. So that whole amount cannot be placed in this 2, 2, you know, 10-248A account, right? All you can, up to only, only 1.170 can be placed. The rest has to be returned to the town. But through a letter which we send, if we have a surplus, we can ask the Board of Finance to designate money for specific purposes. Like, we have not funded the turf field.
In a long time.
Yep.
We, you know, field repl, turf replacement, which we had said we were going to do with any surplus funds, $40,000 a year. Because after 10 years, that has to be replaced. So that, that money is significantly short. So like, we would say.
We're halfway there.
We would say, you know, we haven't funded this out of the 1.17, and this is just an example, we'd like to say that, you know, 200,000 of it or whatever, we'd like specifically designate it for the turf field because we know we've shorted that for, let's say, you know, you know, that. Now, we can just say, hey, listen, we are anticipating, you know, you know, just putting this money away because we're not really sure what's going to happen down the road. Please put it all there. And it, and it just all goes there, and it's not specifically designated to anything.
I mean, we just heard about possible issues with, with the fall sports, right? There's all kinds of things that are coming up here.
Special education.
Special education. So you can say, hey, put two or three, let's just say, and I'm just going to go for argument, say, hey, can you put 200,000 for the turf fields? Because that's probably a good estimate of what we probably have shorted, if not more. Do you know, Ron, how much we have in there for the turf?
So my understanding, seeing as how you just mentioned special ed, I don't think that was put away pursuant to 10-248A last year. So that would be, you, I don't think you're restricted. You know, the Board of Finance could transfer more money to the SPED fund, and it wouldn't be part of this.
Okay.
Oh, cool.
Right, but do you know how much is in the, so we could just put that whole 1.17 and say, do you know how much we have in there for turf fields right now?
Um, there's 80,000 in there.
That's it.
That's it.
And we're, how many years from replacing?
We're five years.
I think we're about halfway, yeah.
We, it was four years ago that they kicked it off, so.
Right, so we would, we would have needed like 400,000 in there, and we have 80.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
We need 400 and we have 80? So we're.
Yeah.
About 400.
We need 400 at the time of.
Five years.
At the time of we have purchased.
Yeah.
They had estimated it would be like 400,000.
To redo, to, well, you had to replace, yeah.
Four years to make up.
Just to replace the turf.
Just replace the turf.
Four years to make up that amount.
Like, I know this year they had to replace the fill, or add in the filling because of that. But we're five, we're, we're literally in our halfway.
And we have 80 grand, so we may want to designate 400.
I agree.
Or 350, 400, just for that, depending, you know, of this. And then just say the rest, un, you know.
Undesignated.
Undesignated, but in that account. Nick?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, looking back at the grant funding that Joe showed earlier, I don't know if we can take some of these funds, put them in the unassigned fund balance on the town side, not earmark them, but have them there so that in the, I'm going to get this wrong, in the fiscal year 2024 budget cycle, when we hit this cliff of X amount of teachers, you're, I mean, you can already tell today that two years down the road, your budget increase from us automatically is going to be something crazy. So if you take some of this money and put it in the unassigned balance, and then in fiscal year 2024, take it out to decrease the tax increase so that you don't hit that cliff. I, we, we have, there has to be some type of mechanism where we can use some of the surplus to try to fix this automatic 6, 7, 8, 9, 10% that would hit us two years from now.
Right.
We're not going to get, we could get rid of the teachers.
Unfortunately, that's not like, we can, that's really not our decision.
No, but in, in putting the budget together, you know, that's something the Board of Finance would certainly.
Right, that would be something that would have to be a discussion with the Board of Finance. We can say, hey, we're going to put, you know, whatever, 1.1, you know, 1.17, and then the balance, which is just under a million dollars, to the undesignedated fund balance and say, hey, listen, we have this issue with grants coming up. You know, we're, you know, we're looking to possibly have, you know, more of a use of the undesignedated fund balance to offset this increase because we have these, this grant and we have that cliff. And that would have to be, like I said, as Ron said, that would have to be the Board of Finance agreeing to that during the budget process.
Right, I know it's not up to us, I'm just saying that it's something that I think we should explore as two boards because we can't, that, that whatever budget year that's going to be, it's just going to be right out the gate, it's going to be crazy.
But it also could be next budget year, quite honestly.
Right.
Because if you, you could technically say, hey, you know, half of that money that Joe presented before that we're using for salaries, well, we can use it right off the bat next year, get those things in the budget, and then free up that money to use in other programs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because you don't know your teachers' need next year, right? This huge kindergarten class is going to trickle into first grade, right? You don't know what's coming in.
Right.
You may have to keep hiring, so maybe for next year.
Right, so you, but you don't have to wait. I would think that if you're going to have that discussion, you should have it for this next fiscal year to get those things off the list because that, you know, that extra money really should be used for programs to address learning loss, not to staff, you know, you know, teachers. So I would say you probably want to have that discussion at budget time, while budget's going on, and say, hey, you know, we're returning almost a million dollars to the general. you know, we're returning almost a million dollars to the general fund, can you use part of that to offset our budget, this budget increase, because we've just had to add four, five, six staff members in the budget? You know, be, be, you know, instead of using the grant money, which really shouldn't be used for that.
Agreed.
I was going to ask the same question, but I'm looking at the line items. And Ron had brought up the special education is not part of these, that funds. Why couldn't we use that, that specific line item for the, the special ed teacher that we're bringing onboard? That, why couldn't we use some of the funds that are set aside just for that special ed with the town?
I think the purpose of that.
You mean the money that's been put away already? We could, we'd have to go to the Board of Finance to.
And I think the purpose is, if we run negative, then we go to the, they would want to pick it up after.
Right. If we run, the purpose is that if we run negative, let's say you have, like, and as we saw from our last meeting, we have a lot more children, kids who are in special ed than what we had last year. So now, all of a sudden, and, and again, it's, it's, it's the same money, you know. So let's say your program for, let's just call it your private tuition, has gone 200,000 dollars over what you anticipated because you have all these additional special ed kids. Well, then you would go, and again, it's just how you slice it and dice it, and you would go, listen, public, you know, private tuition is 200,000 dollars more than we anticipated because we had six kids that came with IEPs that, let's say, had to be outplaced to this program. Then that money would cover it, you would get that credit in your budget for that. And, you know what, you could be paying a teacher, you know, and have that money freed up to pay the special education teacher.
I get it, I just, you know.
Right. So it doesn't matter, one way or the other, you can request that to say we really, you know, to use that.
We just want to wait a little bit.
Well, you'd have to wait to go over budget because they're not going to, if you're, if you're running, let's just say, a surplus in special ed, and you don't need it, they're not going to give you the money to cover special ed if you don't, if you don't have a deficit.
Right, so even though we have to hire a new teacher, we still don't want to go there quite yet.
They're going to wait until later in the year to see what you're, what you're.
What we're trending.
And my question would be, I mean, does the town understand that we're bringing on the amount of people, and we're paying this all with grants, and that in two years, we're going to be in such, or potentially in a situation where, you know.
I think, you know, Joe's been communicating to them on a, with a regular basis.
Yes.
We meet this Thursday, too.
Yeah, and, and that SED money was put away, I mean, they're, they're aware of the potential issues.
So I think our decision really, this evening, is we can, either it all goes back to the general fund and that's it, or we can say, please, take 1.17 and put it into the ten dash two forty-eight A. And of that 1.1, please designate X to the turf field replacement.
So likely that they actually listen to us?
They have, they.
They have in the past.
They have in the past.
Yeah, they do. They usually.
Yeah.
So is it two motions or one motion?
We just need one motion.
Just the one, right?
Yeah, just one motion. And then the rest has to go back to the general fund. There's no.
Right.
Right.
There's, you know, the balance has to.
Or they could, they could transfer more to the special ed fund, which, you know.
Right. But by, by state statute, we can only place the 2% and the rest has to go back.
Pursuant to ten dash two forty-eight, yes.
And they'd have to make the decision on the rest. But we could put in our letter, hey, could you take of the balance of the 900 going to general fund, can you put another 400 in special ed? Because we're really concerned. We could certainly say that.
Just so I'm clear, are, what are we, are we voting on putting it all in the general fund, or are we actually going to itemize what we're?
We would be saying, we could, we by state statute can ask them to put 1.170, oh thirty-eight to the ten dash two forty-eight A account. That's all we can ask them. And we can say, within that, please designate this for the turf field, please.
I think that's the way to go.
Please.
Yes, pretty please.
Pretty please.
And then the rest, we can say, listen, the balance of the rest is going to obviously go to the general fund because that's by state statute where it has to go. But we can say, hey, of that, we'd appreciate if you could nicely put some of that more towards special education because we're really concerned based on our special education numbers that we are going to have a significant deficit this year, possibly in excess of what you've already placed in the account.
And I think Joe's already had those discussions, and with the, with the rapport that we have with the town, Board of Finance, the better relationship we have with them now, I say we, we request the 1.170.
Right, and how much of that do we want to go to turf field? Because 400,000 was what the, five years ago, what they had said turf fields, the turf replacement would be, 400,000. The question is, has that, those figures gone up?
Oh, I'm sure they have.
With COVID, like, changed just the price of all material?
I would bet that it's probably closer to five.
Oh, absolutely.
So we would probably say we want 420.
Right. Give ourselves a little buffer, because we don't know what's going to happen.
500,000 for the turf field.
We may not be able to fund this for then another three years, right?
Correct, you don't know.
We don't know.
You're talking about, you want to lock it in now.
Right, at least a good chunk of it, so when we do have to replace it.
Because remember, we did not fund this for three or four years.
And if I remember correctly, because I was on that committee, it's like, it's a minimal, like, that's the max is 10 years. Like, it could go prior to that. It's not like 10 years, you're, you know, good. It could be eight years.
Right.
It's getting a lot of usage, so who knows?
And clearly, if we're five years in and we only have 80, we've only funded this thing for two years.
Right.
For the past three years, we haven't funded a dime to this.
We do it this year?
What?
Did we do it this year?
Well, we haven't done it yet.
No, this year's budget.
That's what we're talking about doing now, saying.
I know what you mean.
No, regular, regular operating.
In this actual budget.
That's not the way it works. We've funded from our access.
It's never been budgeted.
It's never been budgeted. It's always been done as a additional money left over, we put it to that account to pay.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I say we do. We request the 1.170 with the designation.
Of 420.
And then we continue our, our work with them for the spec ed money.
Right, the rest are undesignedated, but asking for them to consider increasing the special ed.
On their side.
On their side.
Yep.
Do we want to put a number to the special ed or no?
No, I think.
Ron, what is your opinion?
My thought, I mean, another 500 wouldn't hurt. I mean, it's, it's, you're, you're.
I see heads nodding back there, too.
I agree.
I tried not looking.
Can Jen speak to this, or?
Absolutely.
Ron, too.
We're okay right now with just the number of kids that are coming in, and I think that we're seeing it's a good possibility for it to go up this year. So I think whatever we can put in there would be a good thing.
And the 500 that's in there is good, but I, I don't think it's any secret that could get chewed up quick.
Very quick.
So can we move it once it's, once we designate it, if you need it for something else, could you move it?
For what? In the ten two forty-eight account?
No.
Not the special ed, especially with.
No, what we're designating in that account, right? We just said 500,000 for special, which, by the way, I agree.
We're not doing that for that account. We're just saying, for the ten dash two forty-eight account, it's 1.17.
And then we're going to specify.
No, of that, just the 420 is specified. The undesigned, the money going to the undesignedated fund balance, we're requesting them to increase.
What's left, I understand that. Thank you.
Right, that's, and that falls in the town, the Board of Finance.
The other one, the ten two forty-eight is.
All we can really designate is the turf fund that we're agreeing on for this meeting. You're right, that's it.
All right, does everybody agree with that? All right, so I have a motion then to approve that whole thing. Christine?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Thank you.
So I'm going to read it back, just to, so the 1,170.
Oh thirty-eight.
Is oh thirty-eight is the ten two forty-eight A, of which 420 is going to be earmarked for the turf field.
Yes.
The balance for.
Whatever that is.
Yep, and 500 recommendation to go to the SED.
Yes. Yes, exactly. All right, we are almost ending. Okay, item B is the discussion and possible action on the early teacher retirement. What do you call it? Offer to our teachers. Do I have a motion to offer the off-year teacher retirement? Christine and Shannon, any discussion on this? And we will just do it as is with the maximum of eight, and then have the superintendent come back if that exceeds the eight. Um, Joe, do you also have a stipulation in there about date?
November, November 1st.
November 1st, thank you.
Cool.
So we, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. If the superintendent does come back, we need to look at if all this, you know, what budgeted to.
Right.
Right, to go over the eight.
Yes.
I don't, but you never know. Looking at, you know, looking at years of service and whatnot, I don't anticipate what date. We'll see.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor of offering the off-year early retirement teachers? Motion passes. Gary?
Legarment.
All right.
Second, Shannon, all in favor?
Aye.
I think motion passes. Good night, everybody.
Good night.